All right, thank you everyone for your patience. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we can all rise for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll, please?
Allison.
Here.
Carmandy.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Marone.
Here.
All right, I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3U.
Second. Motion is being seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Number five, public question and answer. Any questions for the council from the public? Going once? Going twice? Moving on to number six. Old business. Ms. Small, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
Um, yes, the last time I reported that the town engineer was submitting comments to, um, the developer regarding the proposed as-built, uh, those questions have been forwarded to them, comments, and the good news is that the actual engineer in firm that did the as-built is in direct communication with the town engineer to go over those items. So, we should have an update for the next meeting.
Perfect, making progress. All right, I'll accept a motion on number seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the proposed Choate Bridge easement agreement.
Second. All right, discussion on the motion? Counselor Carmandy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. Uh, I have several things I want to say this evening, but I wanted to start off with expressing just how fond I am of Choate Rosemary Hall. I grew up on High Street, uh, just around the corner, and have such warm memories of growing up, um, with Choate truly being a neighbor. Whether it was sledding down the great hill off of Christian Street in the winter, uh, getting my haircut from Bob the barber, uh, whose barber shop was a floor beneath, uh, your dining hall, uh, going to Sportsense, uh, the summer camp that was housed at Choate, swimming in the pool, playing in the fields. I remember walking over to the campus, uh, with my dad, uh, to watch a football game, uh, or a baseball game, seeing Tom Yankis' coach, uh, who was actually my dad's coach, uh, when he went there. Uh, my dad went to Choate. Uh, I'm a very proud Lyman Hall grad myself, um, but my dad went there, a number of my relatives, and many, many of my closest friends went to Choate as well. And so, I think, uh, I think through them and through my own experiences, uh, that I mentioned and beyond, I have a perspective as a townie for what an incredible institution Choate is. I watched my friends learn and watched their experiences there, uh, and the opportunities afforded to them, and I was always amazed and impressed. And I think so many of us have similar perspectives of Choate, although no one really needs any kind of special perspective into the inner workings of Choate to know what it is. It is just universally known, uh, throughout the world, uh, and think about that, throughout the world, uh, it is known that Choate is a premier preparatory school that is innovative, that is state-of-the-art, that prides itself in its tradition of educating talented young people, uh, like the likes of John F. Kennedy and Adelise Stevenson, uh, and the list goes on. I think Wallingford is very lucky to have such a world-class institution call our town its home. Uh, you have been a great community partner over the course of the past 134 years. We all know about your charitable giving in town, uh, in partnerships with nonprofit organizations in the community, and we are so grateful for it. Um, and I see Allison Cady and Chief Wright out there, and we are grateful for the two of you, uh, as well for your many individual contributions, uh, to our town. Like I already said, Wallingford is lucky to have Choate, um, but Choate is lucky to have Wallingford as well, and I know they know that. Uh, we provide many great services in a sense of community. Um, but a lot has changed in the last 10 to 15 years, and I do have some concerns that I also want to mention, uh, this evening. We have, uh, seen a massive amount of development on campus, which I assume means the school is thriving, and the success of your school is a great thing. But the significant development off of Hill House Way and Rosemary Lane, uh, has caused flooding issues for the abutting homeowners in the more northernly part of North Elm Street. Um, I have seen it, and it's still ongoing. And for the more southerly part of North Elm, we have seen development, some of it happening right now, uh, that has caused increased traffic and congestion that residents have complained about. And then there is Curtis Avenue, uh, where Choate has bought up every single home on the northerly side of the street, um, which certainly they have the right to do. Um, my concern with this, unlike the new development, uh, is that these properties were once on our tax rolls and now are no longer. The town of Wallingford is losing money for our schools and for our infrastructure when Choate buys up these properties. Um, Choate does not have to pay property tax, that is the law, and they are doing nothing wrong in that regard, but it still has an impact on our community. I think it was, uh, Counselor Tada who shared the data from the tax assessor at a recent meeting, uh, that based on the assessment of Choate's buildings and property, uh, they would be paying $4 million a year in taxes if they were a for-profit institution. I know everything I, I just said may not seem like it's about the bridge, um, but in my mind, it is all related. The town has an asset that Choate is looking to purchase. Uh, for that asset, an aerial easement, Choate is going to pay $10. Uh, that might be the going rate for such an easement, and some may say that the bridge is a separate matter than all things Choate, um, but I don't think so. I think it is important to consider all these factors. I think all things considered, $10 is an insufficient payment, uh, for this easement. I'm not against the bridge. Uh, I've seen the renderings, they're beautiful, uh, just like everything else you do on your campus. Um, but I will say, uh, I wonder, and I know others do too, why the bridge wouldn't be down in the heart of campus. I have to drive through that area, uh, almost daily, and 800-plus students, teachers, and faculty are, are crossing in the area of the North Elm and Christian Street intersection, um, which certainly presents a danger. Uh, the bridge that you are proposing is going to almost be a half a mile away from that intersection, way up on the hill, where I don't often see pedestrians crossing. Um, but ultimately, that is not my business. Choate, of course, has the right to build and develop their campus as they so choose, as long as it is within our zoning parameters. It is, of course, your choice and your decision. And so, with all that being said, again, I think $10 is an insufficient payment. Uh, so what I would like to see is Choate go back and have some internal discussions and conversations, and then come back to the town with a new offer. I would also like to see Choate contemplate a payment in lieu of tax program, a pilot, for all the reasons I have just stated. A pilot program is something that I know Counselor Testa has been working on and researching, uh, and I agree with him that we should look into the possibility of a voluntary agreement that would help offset some of the lost tax revenue that we have experienced. Um, I happened to call the tax assessor's office in, in Deerfield, Massachusetts this afternoon, and had a very nice conversation with a lady in the office, and asked her about what Deerfield Academy does, uh, with their town, a, a school comparable to yours. And, and she started off by saying, uh, they do this and that and all these things for their community. And, and I didn't tell her where I was from, but said the school in my town does all the, uh, does all these great things as well. Uh, but she continued and said they do provide, and, and they don't call it a pilot there, they call it a gift, um, somewhere well above $100,000 a year to the town. And that tracks, because I have seen information where a number of your other peer schools provide a pilot of similar amounts to their host communities. It, it really doesn't bring me joy or pleasure to bring all of this up tonight, because as I've said, I am very fond of Choate and believe Choate is an incredible asset to this community. Um, but when we think about municipal services our town provides, fire, police, EMS, our public schools for your faculties, young children, services that we are more than happy to provide, and then factoring in the lost revenue from homes taken off our grand list, uh, I think this is a conversation worth having, uh, and frankly, I think overdue. I know, uh, that conversation can't and should not happen this evening and in this venue, but I think it needs to happen. Again, uh, Choate Rosemary Hall has been an amazing community partner, but I hope we can expand upon that relationship. It is something that would help us, a, a gift, as Deerfield calls it, and I know we would forever be grateful for your additional support for our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I can't help but whenever I think about this debate, it seems to ring or drip with a level of envy. We hear, "Well, Choate, they got lots of money. They can afford, pay us lots of money," for something that really doesn't have a, a value. I also think about Dr. Seuss, Green Eggs and Ham. "I will oppose this no matter what. I will come up with all of these reasons to oppose." I find myself coming away from the bridge and thinking about those things, and have to come back to the bridge. The fact of the matter is, is that the property is owned on both sides by Choate. I don't have an affinity for Choate, but I, I do appreciate what Choate does for our town and, and the cooperation that I've seen them working with the town. You know, the flooding issues that I hear about, I'm not aware of any determination by any governmental body. Not defending, I'm not asserting, but I've done water trespass cases. I, I know there can be determinations that that has happened, and, and I find it hard to deal with that we have, you know, an accusation, but at least to my knowledge, no foundation. You know, we have other nonprofits in town that I guess, i- if one wanted to go down this road, you know, Hartford Hospital has a new facility on Route 5. They're a nonprofit, they're a, a hospital. I, I guess if you, you know, you could take that same argument and say they bought that property, they took it off of the, the rolls, because I think that was a private property prior there too, and, and now we're gonna take this envious position against them too. We have churches in town that do things for people that are underprivileged, um, you know, that need some help. I, I guess you could take the envious position with regard to them as well. I think if there was going to be a, a change in the financial situation, that's something that has to be done federally. Um, I, I believe that's the authorization by which the tax exemption is established, and I don't see anybody lobbying our federal delegation with regard to, to changing those situations. So, once again, I have to come back to the bridge. Um, I know the agreement was not in our backup, so I, am I to assume that the agreement that was before us at the last meeting is the agreement that's, we are contemplating tonight?
Yes, I, I didn't look at the packet, I assumed that it would either be there or you already have it, but yes.
Yeah, I printed it from the last one, so Janice, I just, because I want to stay with the bridge. Um, we didn't get to ask a lot of questions last time because this got tabled, but the Exhibit A and Exhibit B that are referenced in here, Exhibit A is dealt with first in the third paragraph, and it talks about a depiction. So, depictions are usually a drawing. Is that's what's anticipated to be Exhibit A, a drawing? They're blank.
I actually think Exhibit A is supposed to be more specific than that. I gotta look through my file here. Um, hold on a second. Last time I gave you a drawing from the engineer, um, which was a sketch, I think that the Exhibit A would be a more defined description, I think was the intent of that. Once, um, we get closer to having some, a more specific design, but I think it's in line with the, the drawing, the, um, engineer's drawing.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
Yeah.
So, moving on to, at the bottom of that page, we have Exhibit B.
Right.
And we say, "Conceptually described in Exhibit B." So, what is anticipated to be, if we've already got a rendering, which is Exhibit A, what is anticipated by Exhibit B?
Well, I think, I think it's really meant to be that rendering at this point in time, um, which is why it says that any final design would then be up to the, um, town's approval once it's done.
Okay, and I, I know work has to be done here.
Right, right.
So, am I to understand there is no, there will no, not be an Exhibit A and Exhibit B, there would just be an Exhibit A? Is that fair?
No, I think there's gonna still, I think there's going to be a, a more specific, uh, meets and bounds type drawing, I mean, over, for the airspace. Um, so it's going to be the, the location and the dimensions are gonna be fine-tuned, which I think are more in line with the engineer's drawing, the specifics. The conceptual is there to show what is the intent of what it's to look like, and, um, you know, subject to final approvals, it's gotta go through an approval process, so, and then if there's some changes to how that looks, it would have to be approved by the town.
No, I, I got the procedure, I'm just trying to figure, because we don't have a proposed Exhibit A and Exhibit B, so if Exhibit A is the rendering, you know, is Exhibit B anticipated to be the description of the area that's covered? Because as we have this discussion, if you look at the next page, we are now saying that Exhibit B describes and depicts. So, depiction is a drawing, description is words, right?
Mm-hmm.
On page one, we didn't say we were describing and depicting, and now we are, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Right?
All right, give me a minute. I, I think Exhibit A is supposed to be the actual legal description, um, which the drawings are not. That's...
Okay, so then, when the first time we reference Exhibit A, it would not say, "As depicted in Exhibit A," it would say, "described in Exhibit A," right?
Yeah, that would be a better word, yes.
And then the drawing would be B, right? For the purposes of where we are, is that fair?
Yeah, I think the drawing can be B, and it could also be the, with, with the engineer's drawing at this point in time, to be fine-tuned as we get closer to that.
Okay, and then, on page, on page two, page two, the, um, construction of bridge insurance during design and construction, it appears that that paragraph deals with more than that. If you look right after the second entry of 2 million, it says, "All liability insurance shall be maintained throughout the course of the construction of the bridge."
Mm-hmm.
Got that. "And for a period thereafter, as described by the town, as required by the town in order to protect the town from any covered liability." So, that, I think, would mean the requirement for insurance after this thing is built.
No, that is, um, that's, that's a construction, because they're going, the, whatever construction firm, um, does the work will have to carry the insurance, and it needs to carry it beyond the end of the construction for whatever period of time deemed relevant for any claims that could come in. But then when you go later on into the agreement, um, Choate has to maintain insurance, it's on page four, so the construction is a different time period.
Okay, you're talking about paragraph six, and that's exactly...
Yes, yeah. So, during the construction, it's gonna be fully covered, um, by both, um, the contractor, and then the, Choate is responsible for the contractor making sure all the insurances are in place.
Okay, that clears that up. Um, okay. I'm good with the document, um, I'm good with the arrangement. Um, I, I don't know that, you know, the analogy I was sort of thinking about today is, you know, somebody goes to do a little park and they fly a kite every day. Granted, they're doing that because they have open license to utilize the park, but this is similar to that. This is, it's an easement, it's not an exclusive use, it's not the conveyance of that area, it is the ability to, for pedestrian traffic to go over this bridge, which brings me to the last question. The bridge itself is designed for pedestrian traffic, what about vehicular traffic? Is there some bar on that? I mean, I know they have little carts, um, Kubotas, you know, stuff, you know, those, those small little things. It seems like within this agreement that all that is anticipated is pedestrian traffic.
Correct.
So, is there a preclusion on, uh, you know, lawn mowers, Kubotas?
I don't, I don't even know what a Kubot is, you're gonna have to tell me what that is.
It's a small utility vehicle.
All those things that spit around, I want to drive one of those.
No, it's, there's something more than a go-kart.
Oh, 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 oh.
But they're used, you know, usually by somebody working the yard, you know, you put the rakes and stuff in the back, you know, because there's grass on either sides of this thing.
I, I mean, I don't know why a lawnmower would use this, but, I mean, it's for pedestrian use, that's what, it's a pedestrian walkway.
Understood, but, and, and I haven't been there when they're mowing the lawn, but I would expect that more than likely, a lawnmower, other things like that would desire to, from, to get from one side of the street to the other side of the street. Are they barred under this agreement from utilizing the bridge for that purpose?
Use, the use is limited to pedestrian walkway use, so, um, I can't imagine that somebody would, that they, that was viewed as a, I mean, I guess if you're pushing a lawnmower, I suppose you're driving a lawnmower, but it's specifically for a pedestrian bridge.
So, I don't, I don't know if the parties, when they were talking about this, had anticipated that issue. Um, so I'll defer to Choate as to whether or not they understood that this bridge is just for pedestrians and is not supposed to be used, at least under this agreement, for vehicular traffic, no matter what size, so, uh, but with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll defer.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, on to Counselor Reynolds.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, if I'm understanding all of this correctly, we're basically gonna enter into a legally binding agreement in exchange for the air above a street, um, and we'll call it an easement, even though it's a structure that will be there forever, basically, and we're allowing them to put it there. Um, it would be an impressive addition to the campus. Um, I said in the last meeting, the pictures are beautiful, um, you know, I, it would be really nice to come over the hill and see it. I have no concerns with it. Um, you know, but every time we kind of come to this thing, comes a discussion about, you know, Choate comes to the town for an accommodation or request, and the conversations regarding equity and our mutual relationships eventually come to the surface, and on merit, I really don't have a reason to oppose there being a bridge to safely move people across the road. Um, the plans I've looked at are impressive in their scope and detail, and as a neighbor, I said this the last meeting, I live across the street from Choate property, I would welcome the bridge and the purposes that it does or would be intended to serve. But with that being said, we've, and we've received a fair amount of correspondence from people and entities within our community, both groups as well as, uh, sports clubs, and, and, and I'm, and I'm so impressed with the support that Choate has. Um, you know, with respect to Wallingford being a town that supports Choate as a business, I fail to see where we as a town have really ever not been accommodating in that regard. Um, and while I take all the input from the individuals that support Choate's plans as a right, as a business, to expand and grow and remain competitive, I too have to take into consideration the lack of support from others in town, in particular some of the neighbors of the school. These are folks that have taken issues with various things over the years that should warrant our attention and consideration when we're making decisions like this as well, right? It is big, it is part of a bigger picture, as Counselor Carmandy pointed out. In terms of the safety concerns regarding the road, I think that the traffic data provided demonstrates that people drive on occasion at unsafe speeds, it's true, and the configuration of the road being curvy and hilly and so forth would warrant a response from the school to protect people on its campus. And while the bridge would mitigate the concerns over the pedestrians, uh, concerns over pedestrian safety in that particular area, as a neighbor, I question, will it really change the behavior of the drivers? Because you don't have to drive, you don't have to travel too quickly over a speed hump on Long Wharf out in front of Ikea in New Haven to recognize... on Long Wharf out in front of IKEA in New Haven to recognize that you can't drive faster than a certain amount on that road ever again, right? So you put a bridge above a road, people will just fly underneath it, because guess what? There's no people there to worry about. But you put up a hump in the middle of the road, they'll stop because they have to, because they'll bottom out on it. So I don't think if we put any impediment to the road in the sky, it will make people drive any safer. In fact, I don't necessarily think that that would adequately address the concerns of the poor way that people drive around that area, which in particular, I live on Old Durham Road, and people use it as a pass-through, and they drive at speeds of 50, 60, even probably 70 miles an hour going downhill to come down to East Main, to then cross over to go to the other side of Old Durham Road, to then pop out on Christian Street, right where this bridge is going to go. Going quite fast, never stopping. I've walked on there, it's dangerous, okay? With respect to remaining competitive as a business, in the business of private education, because that was one of the things that was stated when, originally when we talked about this, I can respect that need as well. But with that being said, we too, as a town, are competitive with respect to the quality of education that we provide to our children. And the impact that the performance of our schools has on our future as a town in terms of attracting families to move here is quite real. When we consider this prospect, this is where I begin to lose some of my faith in the concept of a nominal fee in exchange for our air. Metaphorically, we're allowing Choate to build a bridge over Wallingford so that its inhabitants do not even have to walk on our streets, and this is already on top of the ever-growing space that they currently and could eventually occupy with more development. We've heard concerns regarding flooding with respect to the recent Choate homes and dwellings that were built on North Elm Street. We also know that there's never been really any meaningful attempt to address the amount of tax revenue that's been removed from our tax rolls every time a home is purchased and flipped to a Choate building. Further, as these properties become more attractive in fewer number, the rise in purchase prices due to the competition will continue to contribute to overinflating the values of the homes in those areas. So we as a town are thinking about affordable housing development, and we talk about the development of our upper and lower downtown. But in conjunction, I see the actions of Choate as less than helpful. With no ill intent, their behavior as a business is in essence contributing to our issues with affordability and the availability of housing in that part of town. So as we discuss the inevitable renovation of our own high schools and middle schools, something that will eventually have to happen, we would be remiss to not acknowledge the gradual decline in the revenue that once came from the privately held homes in the vicinity of Choate's campus that they now currently own. In addition to competing with other towns for new families, we're now also competing with Choate to keep our brightest students and athletes in our public schools. Students in our public schools have to overload themselves with AP courses and other activities to remain attractive to colleges, while students that graduate from Choate can be considered on that merit in and of itself. Choate is one of the top 20 private schools in the country. I've seen it ranked as high as three even a few years ago. So I view the exchange of a nominal amount in contract between two entities where the arrangement is mutually beneficial, but I don't see this as mutually beneficial. At this point in time, while I would welcome Choate's addition to their campus, as someone is being asked to put a cost on the air above our heads, I don't think that a one-time payment of $10 is adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Tessa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got sidetracked a little bit by the discussion of vehicular traffic, but I, but it was an interesting thought. And I look at a pedestrian bridge as akin to a sidewalk, and sidewalks need to be cleared of snow, for one thing. Maintenance vehicles are traversing the campus on sidewalks all the time. I don't recall from the drawings whether there's a, there's a roof, but then again, I would think that there has to be, there's a very good chance that some of this would need to have snow cleared, so there might be the need for small vehicles with a plow or a snow blower needed to just make them safe to walk on, spread ice, spread salt for ice. So I'm, I'm a little, on the side, I'm concerned about the assertion that this agreement bars any vehicles traveling over this bridge. And at some point, I wouldn't mind if that was clarified, because I don't see the point anyway. But anyway, I will move on. I, I've been thinking about an idea for a couple of years now, and it, it evolved as, you know, from conversations with certain members of the public and just my observations and, but it basically evolved as the increase, as Choate increased their stock of residential properties. I want to compliment Counselor Carmody. He expressed so much of what I was feeling so well. I'll try not to duplicate too much of what he said. But I, I looked at, at the increasing number of residential homes and thought to myself, well, you know, how can they all be exempt from taxes? And I know the law is pretty specific about educational facilities, and it appeared to me that a vast majority of the homes that are owned are for, are residential properties for faculty, homes where they can, they can, they can live. But somewhere along, somehow or another, there is a, there's an educational component attached, claimed, or however, in which allows them to maintain a tax exemption. And that was what I started questioning, not the overall tax exemption for the school. Not even interested in talking about that. I have no problem with that. Of majority of the value of their real estate is buildings that are unquestionably, they unquestionably fall under the category of educational use facilities. It's narrowing it down to the residential properties. And as, over the last 10, 15 years, as that number of properties has grown, it caught my attention, and I started thinking to myself, it would be, how could we have a discussion about perhaps agreeing to some type of payment in lieu of taxes based on, solely on the residential properties that fall in that category of, you know, primarily residential, maybe there's something going on there that causes them to meet the criteria. But I'm not talking about residential properties that have offices in them. I'm not talking about any of that. I'm not talking about any of the rest of the property. So I don't know, I just didn't have the, I guess, energy to look at all of the properties on the lists that we've received and just determine which ones are, you know, fit the criteria that I'm speaking of. So it would be nice if that analysis was done. So let's say, and I'm just, I'm being hypothetical, so if all of the property that Choate owns, if taxed as any other private business, would generate four plus million dollars, the residential component, just the homes, would they generate one and a half, one, two? I don't really know what it is. But I would like us, I would only like to look at those properties and then look at some type of possible agreement that we could reach, which acknowledges that they are off of our tax rolls. I would never question all that Choate does for the town. I have zero hostility toward Choate. I was on the Board of Directors for the Symphony for years. I have no, this is not born of any hostility. But it's, to me, it's a simple matter of the evolution of your, the organization, the school, changes in the town, and the realization that perhaps it's time we had a meaningful discussion between us and, and come up with something where we could agree to a, what would amount to a voluntary contribution to the town based on the residential properties that are owned. And I would want that contribution, however it's calculated, to be earmarked specifically for our school system. So as we've had the last couple of years of real difficult Board of Ed budgets, it seemed to me that, okay, we have an educational facility of the highest quality, among the best in the world, without question, in our community, and they do send students to our school system, faculty members send students to our school system. So if they were to make a contribution through some type of agreement, I would want that money earmarked to education. I just think, for nothing else, it, it looks better. It, it, it sells better. It, I'm using poor choice of words there, but I think, I think you know what I'm talking about. It makes more sense, it's more appealing. Now, what would that amount be? I have no idea. I tried to come up with some type of ideas, but I've been stuck in a situation where I did not know how to initiate this. I'm only a counselor, I can't go negotiate with people. That's an administrative function. I contemplated meeting with the administration, say, would you approach them? What I first tried to do, and I bungled this, was I, I tried to see if we could have an executive session discussion, just so that we could talk about it as a council and administration. And the only thing I wanted to talk about was, how might we initiate the discussion? That was it. There was no, nothing on the table that I wanted to talk about. And I thought, at least if we do that, we're not springing this at a public meeting, and maybe we all get together and the administration agrees, or the council says, yeah, I think I would like to see us initiate that type, type of discussion, and this is how we can go about doing it. And then, so I sent an email to everybody. My bad. I know that our emails, when there's everybody involved, is FOI-able. I don't intend them to be secret, and, but it's the only way I could talk to everybody. And what I did was I just threw out an idea about what might, one possibility, so that everybody would know what I had in mind. This is kind of what I'm thinking about. So can we have an executive session? Can we talk about this? And then can we find a way to approach Choate? And then maybe we could begin some negotiations between the administration and the, and the school? And then if anything of any reasonable import arises, naturally, it has to be discussed in public. So it's not going to be a secret agreement. But you don't negotiate, you don't initiate negotiations in public. You don't throw out an idea with numbers attached in public. It's, it's just not fair to the other party. It's not the right, it's not a good way to do business. So that was why I, I did that, sent that email. Well, lo and behold, somebody felt it was okay to just leak that with a local gadfly, and now it's blasting all over Facebook and all the Facebook forums, and that's okay. I thought it might happen. I, I'd hoped it wouldn't, but what are you going to do? But I want to know that I'm, I'm not, I'm not thrilled that these Facebook posts are saying, yeah, Vinnie Testa's looking to get money from Choate. Somebody's looking to get money from Choate. Yeah, don't, don't jump on board with me like that. No, thank you. Don't champion me like that, okay? You got a leaked email. It said I was interested in something like this, but I'm not interested in following these, whatever strategies are being thrown about on, on social media. And I want to assure Choate that what I, what I'm doing is in no way in conjunction with anybody else other than myself. I did send a letter to the head of the school, just expressing what I just said. And I guess here's where, here's where I'm going to leave it. Maybe it's naive, I don't know. I have no objection to the bridge. Haven't had an objection to it, and I don't have an objection to it. I think saying, give us $10 for it, is just, it's just bad optics, but, but I'm not proposing that we talk about, that I'm not proposing a pilot agreement as a condition of my approval for that bridge. That would take forever. In other words, I'm not holding it hostage for this. What I would like to see is a good faith expression on the part of Choate that you'll enter into a discussion like this, you're open to a discussion, not a commitment to do anything, but you, you recognize the, the feelings that have been expressed, and that you might be willing to sit down with our administration and talk about negotiating some type of payment to the community down the road. And for me, that simple expression of good faith, that you'd be willing to do that, is enough for me, to say, I'm good and I'm okay with the bridge, because I have no problem with the bridge. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But I'm not looking to hold this hostage. I'm not looking to demand a certain amount of money, because I think that's counterproductive. A lot of people have thrown out figures like, this is what we should get as a one-time payment or whatever. That's counterproductive. I'm looking to take our relationship to the next level and do so in a respectful manner. And like I said, I don't think I'm being naive, I'm just trying to be on the, you know, open about what I'd like to see happen. And I would have brought this up at some point anyway, but this just seemed to be a good time to do it, because you're here. You know, we're talking to Choate about something. We're, we all have it on the agenda. So hopefully that explains a little bit about how I got where I am, how my thoughts became public, and what I would like to see happen. And I think for now, that's, that's enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. I just wanted to recap, because I know it's been a couple of meetings already, so I don't want to talk a long time, just why I do support this bridge and why I had no problem leading with the motion. The safety issues, daughter soccer team, I've been one of those families crossing the road, four teams at a time. I've also been a driver through there during those sessions over the weekends. It is clearly not a good situation as it exists now. Police department agrees. This, this can only be beneficial. It, it would even be like, great, they want to put a bridge in, that seems like over the top. Okay, fine. It's way safer than it is now. It's their property. They're strong community contributors. We, we have to be honest with ourselves, our downtown would not quite exactly be able to be what it is or sustain what it is without Choate's constant influence and economic injection of, of, of money and funding through consumer goods and services. I like to think we're a good neighbor, going over with what Counselor Tessa was saying. I don't think that this needs to be a quid pro, you know, for the, for a pilot. We don't need to say, okay, you can have the bridge, and now we're going to discuss the pilot. The $10, I don't know, like, what, what are we going to pick, $100,000, $200,000? Is this an annual thing, or is it a one-time thing? Like, you could say $5 million, and there's people out there that are not going to be happy with the $5 million. We, I don't think it's wise to tie an ongoing payment to this one-time purchase. What, so they rent the airspace, and what if they decide they don't want to do it anymore? They're going to tear the bridge down? Or we're going to say, no, you got to pay us more in 10 years, because we think it's worth more than $10 a year? Whatever it is. Future plans, I don't know what Choate's doing in the future. I don't know what I'm doing in my own backyard. I mow the lawn, and I'm like, oh, I'm going to put a little railing up here, so it'll be easier to mow the lawn. so it'll be easier to mow the lawn next year. And the next year, I don't do that, even though I had the full good intention to do that. Instead, I plant a tree. I don't know. I think what I can trust is that Cho is interested in being the best private school that they can be, and that Wallingford benefits from that. And if eventually future things are built there, great. But I think what we need to do is be a good supporting host town and work with them. And I agree with Counselor Testa. I hope that this inspires these discussions, which we've had before. And we've had side conversations, and we've discussed education funding, the residential properties, or the students that are from Cho families that attend Wallingford Public Schools, some sort of compensation. All these things have been kicked around. And maybe now this is just the impetus to kind of get all that going, but I don't think it necessitates having to be tied to the vote on the bridge tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, moving on to Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since this item was tabled from the last meeting, I won't repeat my comments from the prior meeting, but I would like to comment specifically about the easement in and of itself, which really has nothing to do with Choate, but rather with the town, and how oftentimes in town government we give an unfair advantage to certain entities, and often at the expense of our tax-paying residents and businesses. So I've been thinking a lot about this since the last meeting. If anyone else in town owned two pieces of property on either side of a street and wanted to build a bridge over a town road to connect them, and they offered $10 to do so, we would laugh at them. Nobody else would have that opportunity. We have an asset that they want, and we're giving it away. So whether it's an air right or something else, it has inherent value to someone. Somebody needs this, and we are just giving that away. I think there's, you know, an issue of fairness, and that's what I've been thinking about since the last meeting. So whether it's Cho or anyone else, I think to give something away that's, you know, an asset of ours, I don't think this is the right thing to do. On that same note, this agenda item says it was submitted by the law department. So I'm kind of wondering how we got here. Did Cho approach the law department, who then drew up this agreement on Cho's behalf? And who else in this town would have been afforded that luxury and use of town resources if they had gone into town hall and asked that same thing? So I'm just curious how this agreement came to be.
Okay, I don't know who put law on the agenda. You tabled it, so you decided to put it back on the agenda. Whoever did the agenda, I didn't ask for that. I don't know if originally it was my item, I don't just, whatever. I, the conversation was initiated in the prior mayor's office. It was not the law department. I only work for when the town asks me to do some work, that included the mayor's office. That conversation continued with the current mayor, so that's where it all originated. And then I get brought into the conversation for the legal work. So it's not like somebody approaches me directly, and I start doing that.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like the prior mayor had a discussion with Cho, and then that's when the law department was...
That's when the conversation started.
Okay, okay. So to my point, you know, if, I think if a private citizen, you know, were to do the same thing, were to go into the mayor's office and say, "I have, you know, two pieces of property, and I'd like to build this bridge, and I would like your help, and I would like the law department to create this contract for me to do so, and I'm also not paying you for it," I don't think that would fly with many groups in town. And so, to me, it's kind of a fairness issue. The other issue that I have, or question I guess that I have, if this is to go through, signage on the bridge, that's been brought up. Can we put something in this agreement that bans any sort of signage on the bridge? Or is that a planning and zoning issue?
No, the easement could restrict that.
It could, okay.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I didn't like draft this for Cho. They had their own attorney, so it was a back and forth between me and their counsel. It wasn't, it wasn't like I just drafted it for them.
Okay, thank you, understood.
But yes, you could add that to the easement.
Okay, then I would like to make an amendment, a friendly amendment to the motion, that we add the wording, and I guess, I mean, I'll throw out something, and we'll see if the law department agrees, but I would make an amendment that we add the wording, "No signage shall be placed anywhere on the bridge."
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so now, discussion on the amendment? I'm sorry, Counselor Tada, you all set?
Um, yes, for now, yes, thank you.
Any signage, or are you meaning like advertising signage? I mean, if they wanted to put their name on it, would you be opposed to that?
That's specifically what I do not want. So I'm saying any signage, and I'm, yeah. And I've seen, you know, other schools, I believe, like Southern Connecticut State University, I believe, years ago, and I'm not sure if it's still there. You know, they had a bridge over their property, and it had a huge sign that said, "Southern Connecticut State University." And I think there were residents that were concerned that this would then become a gigantic sign for Cho's use. So I'm saying if the motion, if we add to this, no signage anywhere on this bridge, it alleviates any of that ever happening. Thank you.
All right, questions on the amendment? Counselor Fishbein?
I would be opposed to the proposed amendment. This way is a sign. That way is a sign. An arrow is a sign. I don't, I mean, it's part of the envy aspect. We wouldn't do this to anybody else. We have regulations having to do with signage in our town. And now to, you know, to whack the applicant, because, I mean, I just think it's inappropriate. What I just heard was, you know, if we had two, if there was a property owner that owned both sides of the road, and we wanted a bridge, if it was anybody else but Cho, we wouldn't let it happen. But I'm gonna tell you, you know, the Halloween, the Trail of Terror, right? If they started to park everybody across the street because they own the street, you ever seen the pedestrian traffic there? I'd be the first one to say, "Hey, let them have a bridge." I'm opposed to the amendment, thank you.
Back to Counselor Tada.
Uh, thank you. You know, I think as far as the signage too, I think the difference here is that, you know, if you put signs on their property, this is not, this is not Cho's property. You know, this will never be Cho's property, it's an easement. So I think to, you know, not, to have signage on something that they don't own is different than saying you can't put a sign on your own property. And that's where I think the zoning regulations might not come into play in the same way. It's not, it's an easement, it's putting a sign on an easement, it's not putting a sign on their own property. Thank you.
Counselor Allison.
So, I'm also opposed to this, only because I've never seen, well, first of all, I agree with Craig twice today. The, I like to count now. So firstly, on this, where a sign is a sign, is a sign. I have never seen Cho go around doing shoddy signage. Everything, including the parking structure that they're building, is done pretty classily. So I have to say, I mean, maybe, I would be opposed to like advertisements, sure, but I don't think that them putting a sign, "The easement is for the air." The bridge that they are building with their money is their property. And so like, I can understand, and Counselor Tada, I mean, you know, it's one of those things where, I get it, where you are as far as the view that if it's in the air, it's an easement, but if we say it's not theirs, then who maintains it? You know, and so, I would just say, I don't necessarily agree with the amendment. I could be swayed if we limited it to like vinyl signs or advertisements, but I don't think that saying they should not be allowed to put their own name on their, on the bridge is, or any directional signage, pedestrian signage, whatever, is necessary for safety. I don't think that that is, I don't think that that's entirely necessary. And we do have planning and zoning in the instance that somehow they do violate some rule with the type of signage they want to use.
Thank you, Counselor Laffin.
Thanks. Counselor Tada, if this passed, would you support the bridge?
If the amendment passed?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. I don't support the amendment either, because again, the sign is a sign thing that Counselor Fishbein and Allison have said. I mean, then we're getting into like, well, what about clearance? Shouldn't there be a clearance sign on there? Shouldn't there be like, watch out for icicles or something? I don't know, like, I feel like there should be the option to put up signs. And I agree, I think, I don't think Cho's gonna do anything that's gaudy or anything. And they don't really have a ton of other signs saying, "Welcome to Cho," or anything as you drive into campus, so I'm okay with it without the amendment.
Anyone else on this, on the amendment? I mean, to be frank, you know, it's funny, because we talk about this whole like, small government, big government kind of thing, right? In sort of like grandiose terms. And this is sort of an idea where you have now, I feel the same way about this the way I do about the barriers around the dining tables on Center Street, which is like, you know, why does the government need to step in and dictate exactly how it's gonna appear based on how the property owner wants it to appear? So if Cho wants to put Cho on their bridge, it's kind of, it's their bridge. They built it, they spent the money on it. You know, I think it's sort of fitting. I mean, it's not in a location where anyone can see it, unless you're from the cemetery, or you're from Cho's property. You know, it's not really visible to anyone but the people traveling on that road and people on Cho property, or the cemetery. So I don't think the cemetery's gonna mind. So I am also opposed to the amendment. Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, and I can't find the provision right now. I did read this today, maybe confirmed through Janice. The ultimate approval of what is erected in this area goes through planning and zoning, correct? So, as part of that application process, because it would be an application, they would disclose whatever signage, and it would come in conformity with our current regulations.
Yeah, I would expect that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And members of the public on the amendment only. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll on the amendment?
Allison, no. Carmody?
No.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Reynolds?
No.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Moron?
And I vote no, so the motion fails. All right, so back to discussion on the underlying motion of the bridge. Counselor Regan. Actually, I'm sorry, we're not getting an audio from me, Counselor Regan.
We did earlier.
Still no audio, hang on one second, please. All right, we'll come back to you in a second. Does anyone else want to talk on this item? Counselor Allison?
I'm not gonna be very long, so I hope this gets fixed quick. So, the first time I agreed with Counselor Fishbein tonight was when he said, you know, when we look at pilot programs for one nonprofit, in order for it to be non-discriminatory, wouldn't we have to look at pilot programs for many nonprofits? For all nonprofits, or all property-owning nonprofits? I don't find that the pilot program is best discussed in this matter as far as a quid pro quo arrangement. I don't think that the optics on that are any better than the optics on a $10 payment for air, which we are never going to use as a town, unless Cho does build this bridge. I do also find that Cho has been a great community partner. We're getting emails from sports teams around town. The YMCA uses their facilities. The, you know, many residents are also emailing us the positives of this bridge going up. The, I acknowledge the negatives, and I can totally understand where those folks are coming from. I don't think this is the hill that we want to fight that battle on. I am not for a pilot program in the first place. I would listen to discussion on it if we, if it came down to it, but I would only listen if we make that equitable according to the IRS's 501(c)(3) tax code, which includes all entities that are 501(c)(3)'s. If we're gonna talk about owners of property, of real property, then I think we would need to discuss all of that as well. So, I did not look up the code for tonight, because I figured we were not going to discuss the pilot program, but if we ever discuss that, I would be happy to bring that to the table. So, I am in support of this bridge. When I saw the traffic data, I thought, if I wasn't gonna support it before, I sure am now. Because somebody going over 60 miles an hour down that hill at 8:00 a.m., when classes are starting, is ridiculous. Not only should that person, who, there was traffic data showing that that happened five times over the period of, I believe, two weeks that this was up, that is five potential accidents where somebody would be not just killed. That is horrific. And for somebody to do that in the area of a school is even more irresponsible. I hope they made it to the bathroom or wherever they were going that fast. But it's, but the traffic data really did say it all for me. The average speed that people are traveling is 12 miles over the speed limit on that road of several thousand cars pulled. So, I do want to say, I understand, I understand the negatives, but I also understand the positives. And I think that this is a good community partner project. I also think that were we to put the, or were it, were it to be proposed closer to the center of campus, there would be more people not wanting to look at it. So I feel like there would be more opposition, even though there would be a greater use as far as a traffic study would be concerned. So, from that perspective, I'm definitely for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, let's try Counselor Regan one more time. Uh, yeah, I can hear you on the laptop.
Sorry, I'll be extra brief if I can. Some of the basics, the $10 is a filing official.
Counselor Regan?
It's not associated with the word "the bridge." As Counselor Laffin stated, public safety, public safety, public safety. The traffic study shows there is an accident waiting to happen. Sorry to be so blunt. Counselor Reynolds?
I agree with one of your points.
Why isn't there speed bumps? Any place there is educational facility. But let's walk back. There is a significant economic multiplier effect that Cho brings to the community. While they may not pay property taxes directly, the school attracts family-situation area, buying houses, increasing overall tax revenue through other means. Income taxes, sales taxes, and like I mentioned, property taxes. Cho provides local employment opportunities, contributing to the local economy through wages and employees spending. There is an immense amount of cultural events, sports competitions, educational programs that are going to the public, which enriches the community. Cho's only website highlights the programs they work for. Dow, YAM, and others. Each annual work that they offer provides immense community benefits that are difficult to follow. Look at the sponsorship that they have, for instance. We're selling Wallingford, we're working on the interactive traffic project with the economic development community. This is indicative of a good neighbor. Cho makes more, more attractive to the businesses looking to relocate to economic development. For these and a number of other reasons, I agree. I would guess that this is, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Regan. You know, it's fine, I'm gonna go back to something that Mr. Tessa said a while ago, which was, you don't initiate a negotiation in public, right? So here we find ourselves where Choate is asking us for a thing, right? So this is what we see as our opportunity to try to hold this bridge hostage and get the thing that we're, that we're seeking. But if we vote no on the bridge, it leaves us in the same, whether we vote no or yes on the bridge, we're in the same condition we were in prior to having this conversation. So I just dial this back to what are they asking us for? They're asking us for an easement to put up a bridge from their property to their property, not touching any town property for reasons that they identify for safety, right? So now I'm not, I don't want to talk about traffic or accidents. If they feel that this is in their best interest, then I don't really have an issue with that. You know, it's kind of like if you don't like your neighbor's cabinets, right? And you're gonna send your neighbor a letter and say, well, when are you gonna change your kitchen cabinets? Like, this really has nothing to do with us. It's either, you think that they have a right to put up the bridge in their property that's gonna cross our air that we're not using for any particular purpose, or you don't. So I do agree that we shouldn't, this is not the right venue for us to try to squeeze them for, for money, right? So I think we could have this conversation at any time. I think it's, you know, it's gotta start with the, I'm not trying to put this on the mayor, but I think it's gotta start with the administration as sort, you know, because the council's not really in a position to negotiate this kind of an agreement. I'm not sure how I feel about a pilot for the same reasons that Counselor Fishbein identified, which is, you know, so today it's Choate, but then someone at some point is gonna say, well, maybe Holy Trinity School makes a lot of money, or, or what have you, and they should, you know, they should pay into the vig, right? So, you know, could Choate do more for town? Absolutely, they could. I don't have any feelings about Choate, positive or negative. You know, they've been a part of the community since I've been here. And they take care of their things. It's kind of like, what do you want out of a neighbor, right? You want them to take care of their property, you know, and not make a mess, right? And so do they pay for the services, you know, that they use, like fire, ambulance, kids in schools, things like that? Not really, but, but at the same time, you know, there's value to education, there's value to medicine, which is why we tax exempt these things at the federal level. So I just, I find it uncomfortable sort of to be in this position where now your people are asking me to hold hostage this bridge, you know, to try to squeeze them for something else. So based on the bridge and the bridge alone, I don't have an issue with this, with this easement. Counselor Fishbein?
I just want to say that I've been wrestling with this, you know, since it came before us. And when Counsel Reynolds mentioned the speed bumps in front of IKEA, I'll tell you, I hadn't been there in a while, and I was there about a month ago. And the first one I missed, and I think I still have whiplash from it. And there's like four of them down there, and I think only three of them were signed properly. And when we, when we hit it, I sort of thought, you know, this might make some sense here. But then I was thinking about how fast people go there, right? And they're, yeah. So I just wanted, I just thought it was, it was funny that you mentioned it, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's been talk about the consideration of $10 for the bridge. In any agreement, you know, we learn in law school, those of us who bothered to go, that there's gotta be consideration in exchange for what is exchanged. I've had conversations with Attorney Small about obtaining an appraisal for the value of the air rights over the road. And, you know, I don't necessarily need to speak for her, but she spoke to a commercial appraiser who said, the way you value what a town gives up when it gives an easement is what is the loss to the town or the community as a result of the encroachment? You know, this town celebrated its 352nd two years ago, so that means we're 354 years old. And I'm not aware at any point in our history of somebody needing the air over Christian Street, certainly 20 feet above it, which is as high as this bridge is going to be to allow commercial vehicle access. So, and I appreciate the discussion of the counselors who, you know, point out that having a pilot discussion or a discussion of Choate's contribution to the town is opportunistic in light of the request made. One of the residents in the neighborhood asked us about, asked the engineering department in my office about the fence that borders Choate on North Elm Street and Christian Street. And so, because the current concern is that the fence encroaches on the town's right-of-way because of its proximity to the roads. So we did some research and we found out that the town had requested that fence to corral pedestrian traffic. And Choate erected a stone-posted split-rail fence. And, you know, my observation is that's something you don't do inexpensively. In exchange for which, the town council agreed to give them an easement to encroach upon the rights-of-way. This is an instance, 24 years ago, where the town council appreciated the value of safety. The town had made a request to Choate, and so there was a compromise offered in exchange whereby, by one more initiative, Choate was made a safer place to walk around by corralling. I can remember driving on, or walking on North Elm Street before those fences existed. And a couple of students had crossed mid-grade in the block. There was no crosswalk, it was in the block on North Elm Street between Christian and Curtis. And a gentleman driving a large truck slammed on his brakes, skidded to a halt, and yelled at the students, could you please cross in the crosswalk so that I can see you? And this was at dusk. So there was an appreciation for the safety of students, for the frustration of motorists, and a significant accommodation was made by Choate and a compromise with the town that resulted in a prior safety improvement in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the public on this item. I'm sorry, oh, Counsel Reynolds, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I just want to clarify, I'm, because we're talking about now sort of squeezing Choate and holding hostage and such. And I never indicated whether or not I was actually gonna vote for this bridge. However, what I did say was that $10, to me, doesn't necessarily reflect the nature of the relationship between this town and Choate, right? I mean, to Counsel Laffin's point, I'm pretty sure that his daughter's team is a private club that pays Choate for the use of their facilities. So this bridge is gonna be moving people who play on premier teams across the road, not just Choate students, but other kids. I have a friend whose son plays baseball, they rent the fields from Choate. They're gonna be crossing, I mean, so can we really have a discussion about what this is? This is an expansion of your campus, which you are fully intended and well, you know, within your rights to do. I'm not up here trying to squeeze anybody for extra money. I'm just up here trying to make light of the relationship that we've had, that people have complained about for decades, and point out the fact that our tax base is reduced as a result of your actions as a business. That in no way is me trying to squeeze them for extra money. Did I ever mention a pilot in anything that I said? No, Counselor Tessa mentioned a pilot. I never even said anything about that. So for the fact that we're trying to negotiate in public, I'm not trying to negotiate in public. I'm asked to talk about an easement that was presented to me as a legal agreement between us and Choate so that they can buy our air, our air, and build a bridge across our street so that they don't have to touch foot in Wallingford. And furthermore, it will reduce the likelihood that someone would get run over by a car. Absolutely, they're 20 feet above the road. But it won't slow down the people who are driving through there. Make no bones about it. Without an impediment to slow people down, whether it be a police officer or one of those signs that say you're going too fast, or something that's three feet off the ground like Counselor Fishbein hit in front of IKEA, you're not gonna slow people down. And the people at the bottom of that hill are the least safe. And the last thing I'll say is, because part of the justification on the, you know, the traffic and everything was pointed out that there were buses that would go through Choate's campus. Those buses pick up and drop off kids from your school. Those aren't just our buses that are going through your campus. There's kids getting on and off of them at that corner, I watch them. So again, I said before, I'm a neighbor of Choate. I said before, I think the bridge would be beautiful. I said before, I think Choate is a really good neighbor to our town. And I respect the fact that you preserve your open space, you built an environmental center, you give scholarships to students from our towns, you provide a reduced rate on the hockey ring for the Hawks. I read all the emails, I did, but the one thing that I'm trying to say is, at this point in time, and we laughed it off a couple of meetings ago, it was like, what does air cost? Well, I'm telling you, to me, it costs more than 10 bucks. And that's all I'm trying to say here. I'm not trying to squeeze anybody for anything or make you pay money that you're not required to do under law or anything like that. I'm just saying that this is the place where I'm deciding, the one time I get to talk about this in my two-year term so far, this is where I'm saying, let's pause for a second, let's think about the relationship. Are we on equal footing? Because they're doing quite well, and how are we doing? We laid off people in our last budget. We laid off paraeducators in our last budget. We're paying, we're paying with money that we got from the federal government to bail us out of a pandemic to repair elevators in 60-year-old buildings. I mean, come on. I'm not trying to squeeze anybody for anything or, don't mischaracterize anything that I've said tonight other than, we have a relationship with an entity, they want to buy something that we don't have a price on, and I don't think $10 is worth it. So I just want to clarify, I'm not here to negotiate anything. I'm not here to talk about what we can do and how we can make things right. I'm not, and I don't like the characterizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council? Members of the public on this item? Good evening, sir. If you could kindly give your name and address for the record?
Stephen Chisensky, South Airline Road. A private entity is going to put a structure over a public road that at some point in time is going to shed rain, snow, and ice down on my vehicle as I drive underneath it. And what protections do I have through damage to my vehicle? And what promises do we have that the bridge will even be used? You gonna walk up and over and back down carrying stuff? Or are you gonna make that 10-second dash across the road? Which is gonna be more convenient for the people that are supposed to be using this bridge and aggravating others' damage to the roadway from the snow and ice that may be falling on it at all times of the day and night? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, wow, this is just awfully high. Okay, I can project. Good evening, everyone, I'm Tara Knapp at 211 Highland Avenue. So I come here before you, before your council tonight as a proud Choate alumna, parent, and especially a Wallingford resident. I'm here to give my support for this project. And I do so because blind spots and near misses are known issues and are a concern for all. Not just the students and faculty, but for Wallingford residents. It's a regular topic on the Wallingford forums, right? You know, we almost hit somebody, they're crossing the road, so it's always being talked about. And as a student in the 80s and a parent of a student in the 2010s, I witnessed many near-car versus-student incidents. In fact, during my son's years, a student was hit by a car. In those days, we had fewer distractions in our cars, we were not on our phones, and we were more careful driving. And there seemed to be a lot less road rage. Over the years, Choate has taken many steps to create a safer environment for students and to address blind spots for our local drivers. They have worked collaboratively with the town and other authorities to get safer crossing areas and better visibility on Christian Street. This bridge is another example of them taking accountability. They're not hoping for the best, they're not turning a blind eye to this, they're actually being responsible. They're saying this is a problem, they're listening to not just their own constituency, but to Wallingford and to all the complainers and to all the people who are afraid. I'm afraid if I have to skid and stop, I don't want to hit someone. And I want things to be safer when I'm a driver and I want them to be safer for everyone else in the town. So Choate is responding to this, and they know that that's a dangerous blind spot. They're spending their own money. They're not asking Wallingford to spend money, they're spending their own money. But it is going to benefit all of us. It's going to be a tasteful structure. It could be a very beautiful space, whether or not there's a sign on it or not. It'll be something that'll be very attractive, and it'll be functional. So Choate absorbs the cost, Christian Street is safer, it's a win-win. But it's actually only a win if the council approves it, right? So this is a decades-old problem, it's so well-known. And right now, if any kid gets hurt, the blame will be at the foot of Choate. Everyone will blame Choate. What do they do to keep these people safe? Why didn't they do more? But they are trying to do more, they're trying to build a bridge. So if it doesn't get passed tomorrow, if someone gets hurt, then where does the blame go? It might not go at the foot of Choate, it might go at the foot of the town council because something that was a solution maybe didn't pass. And I think we all want safe environment for all of us. And, you know, the near misses are really, they're real, they happen all the time, we see it all the time. And none of us want to be a party to that. And Choate is willing to spend the money. And as a taxpayer, I'm glad that I'm not spending the money, and they're just asking for air. So in closing, I want to add that, you know, I agree with, everybody has been so complimentary tonight, and I also see the positives and the negatives. But as a local business, they've certainly been a point of pride for Wallingford. They've maintained hundreds of acres to a pristine level, brought great beauty to downtown, and they've maintained, so all these comments about having a good neighbor, it's wonderful to have a neighbor that maintains their lands. And they offer up many of their spaces for all these other organizations, whether it be the parking wreck or the Y or Gaylord. And if we, as a town of Wallingford, had to create an ice rink and build one ourselves and then maintain it, and to let all of the town, all of the town teams and other groups, like the Gaylord sled hockey team, practice on it, could we? Could we pay for those extra things that they already have and are maintaining on their campus and letting us use? So I thank you very much for listening to me tonight. I say this not just as an alumna, but really as a concerned citizen and as someone who thinks that it's a really great solution to a decades-old problem. And I think tonight we have a chance to really make a difference and to help them make it safer for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please?
Hi, I'm Colleen Galushko, and I am here to talk about my role with Choate. I'm actually the president for the Wallingford Symphony Orchestra. I've been on the board for a number of years now and have been president for the last two years. The support that Choate gives to the symphony is just truly amazing. They never had to, but they offered to do so from the very beginning. The symphony is turning 50 years old this year for their season, and Choate has been, again, so wonderful in anything that we've ever, ever asked of them. In addition, they have provided us with anything that we've ever asked for. And we've had issues with parking, especially since, you know, now we're at Colony Hall. A lot of folks are older that come to our events, and we do need to get shuttles in order to drop them off much closer to the doors. So by having a bridge like this to offer additional parking, I think is fantastic. And again, I just can't say enough in support of Choate. They've been a wonderful partner and, you know, provided us the location for 50 years and never asked for, basically, it's about $10 is about the price. So it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hello. Hello, leaders of the Wallingford Town Council. My name is Victoria DeVito, and I am a sophomore at Choate Rosemary Hall. Today, I am here to address the council because the school seeks to build a pedestrian bridge across Christian Street. Last year, I decided to leave the small town of Bernardsville, New Jersey, where I've lived for my entire life, to study at Choate. While being away from my family and childhood friends, one thing that gives me comfort is the school's connection with this beautiful community. Walking through Wallingford reminds me of home, and it is a reason I chose Choate. After a hard day, I am glad that I am able to grab a scoop of ice cream or walk to dinner with friends and socialize as part of a local community. But living in a town also has its challenges. Residing on a campus intersected by roads means students, visitors, and drivers are more susceptible to car incidents. Because of this, maintaining road safety is a top priority. And this is especially true during large events where crowds are using the Christian Street parking lot and crossing the road to get to another location. the road to get to another location. The pedestrian bridge is an opportunity to create safer connections between various facilities of campus, specifically the sports fields and the old Gallagher Farm property, both of which are areas involved in after-school activities and major events. Additionally, my fellow students and I realize that we are not the only ones who are impacted. The open layout of campus can be frustrating for drivers who may need to wait for a flood of students and visitors to get to the other side. Pedestrian traffic will always be present, but the proposed pedestrian bridge is an important step to ensure the safety of students and to relieve drivers of extra burdens. Any way to reduce the chance of a distracted student or a tired driver ending up in a harmful situation is an opportunity we will be extremely grateful for. On behalf of the student body, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Wow, I got to follow that. Nice job, Victoria. Sean Doherty, Wallingford Family YMCA, also residing at 2 Winslow Uptill Road. I came before you, I think, back in July to share the partnerships that we have, the YMCA has with Choate Rosemary Hall as it relates to the pools, the wellness center, and especially the early childcare center on Choate Rosemary Hall campus. I want to focus today on the bridge. I want to focus today on the support for the public safety aspect of the bridge, and even more so the support from a collaborative spirit as it relates to private and public partnerships. We all know resources are far and few between as things crunch down, and the more we can work together, and we'll be stronger together. So please consider this application and approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark McGuire. I'm here for Wallingford Youth Lacrosse in favor of the Choate Bridge. Currently, Wallingford has, Lacrosse has about three hundred registered families who do pay taxes in town. And we do utilize the McGuire Gym with access to the field, but we do have to cross Curtis Ave to get over to there, or Curtis Street. And when you have, you know, kids between the ages of, between kindergarten and eighth grade, you never know who's going to run out in front of you when we're trying to use both sides of that road. The other thing is, I also work for 211, and a lot of times my responses are to the schools. Trying to get to a school like Rock Hill when you have to go through Choate Campus makes it difficult to get there in response time, only because of the fact that you're stuck waiting for so many floods of students to walk through. I think the easement would allow for that traffic to be a little smoother, which allowed me to get to that school to help another kid.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Our...
About Beaumont, 25 Maplewood Avenue. As a member of the class of 1960 at Choate, more than one time, I came very close to getting hit crossing North Elm Street. Of course, we had a bunch of young people, a bunch of young guys from town who did their best to try to more or less scare us. The students today don't have to worry about that anywhere near as much, because on lower campus, whether it's on Elm Street, or whether it's on North Elm, or whether it's on Christian, there are now flashing lights. Choate pays twenty-four dollars a year to the electric division for the electricity that is going on, that is being utilized by each of those lights, each of those sets of lights, I should say. That is something that they took on as a safety measure for their students. This then is also a safety measure, not just for their students, it's for their parents, it's for others that come to the campus. I wholeheartedly support this. Today, we have people, by and large, you know, I think one individual mentioned, we have people that are going maybe fifty or sixty miles an hour down there. That's all too true. So my take on it is, as far as I'm concerned, I think we should support it. Choate has been a phenomenal neighbor, not just because I went there, but they have been a phenomenal neighbor for the hundred and twenty-some-odd years that they've been in existence. So I would sincerely ask that you support the easement for the bridge, particularly it doesn't cross the town anything. It's on their property, in all likelihood, it is a unique situation for any set of property owners in the town of Wallingford. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, coming back to the, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Katie, go ahead.
I hope, I hope it's okay if you'll indulge me. The structure of this meeting was a little bit different, but I do feel like as the Choate representative, it might be worthwhile to say a few things. Allison Katie, Chief Communications Officer, Choate Rosemary Hall. I did have some lengthy remarks prepared for tonight, just to kind of recap where we're coming from. But again, you've heard much of this information over the last few meetings. This really is about addressing safety concerns, not only for our students, but for the community pedestrians walking the campus as well as those driving through. Just to recap kind of some of the things that we have addressed and taken on, this is really just next in a series of enhancements that we've looked to do. I didn't even know about the fencing, but that seems like a good idea as well. We have reconfigured pedestrian walking paths through our campus to steer pedestrians away from the four-way intersection. We've collaborated with Wallingford Traffic Authority and Town Engineer to improve and consolidate mid-block crosswalks, eliminating two crosswalks on Christian Street. We paid to purchase and install flashing crosswalk beacons in the town's right-of-way. I think I sent you all a video today, so you can see how students are instructed on how to use those. Choate paid to change the grade and ADA ramps and crosswalks in the town's right-of-way. Choate has invested over one million in public sidewalk, crosswalks, ADA ramps, and intersection infrastructure improvements in 2021 alone. This spring, Choate will invest another one million dollars in town right-of-way improvements on Christian Street and North Elm Streets. We've moved large institutional events away from the center of campus, really to maximize this peripheral parking to avoid the contact of pedestrians with cars. And we really feel like this will provide a safe walkway for pedestrians on campus. As you've heard, this area of campus is not only used by our students, and I do welcome you to come walk a day in their shoes, they cover some territory, but also by many of our local organizations that use the facilities for athletics and/or other fundraising and cultural events. As the agenda of this item this evening is dedicated to the discussion of an easement, if the council will indulge me, I'd like to share some additional remarks to address some of the questions raised tonight and in previous meetings by both the council and the public. I do not plan to address speculation or falsehoods posted to social media or to documents or correspondence sent to the council that has not been shared with Choate. As always, we are open to questions, and we'll do our best to respond today and any day in the future. My colleagues and I are willing and available. In fact, there are several of us on the team that answer questions from the public on a regular basis. Even with that context, it is difficult for me and my colleagues to know how to prepare for meetings like this. On one hand, this discussion should be very concrete, focused on an easement agreement and the merits of the pedestrian bridge to solve safety concerns. However, the side narrative always seems to come back to Choate Rosemary Hall's value and place in the community. So let me make brief statements on both. We are often asked about the school's building, renovation, and expansion plans and the transparency of those plans, the goals of our projects, and the plans for the future. Our position is quite simple. In order to remain a top independent boarding school, Choate needs to invest in maintaining and upgrading its physical plant, just like all public and private organizations do, in order to stay relevant, competitive, desirable, and at the top of our respective field. The school, many of its core buildings and infrastructure are over a hundred years old, so this is a matter of maintenance, but also relevance. Our students, our program, and the use of our campus has changed over time. Our prospective students and parents are discerning consumers looking for the absolute best schooling option for their adolescents, and I will say, that's a safe environment as well, very important. That experience includes top-notch facilities, innovative programs, and as you've heard tonight, people travel from across the US and the world to visit Choate and Wallingford. Recent renovation and building plans address these needs, improving dining option in the dining hall, creating human-use space in Colony Hall, updating dorm rooms in Hill House, and planning a welcome center for applicants and visitors. If we don't improve, we'll risk losing applicants' tuition and our strong standing among boarding schools. And why does that matter? Well, because we do bring value to this community. We offer transformational experience and unparalleled opportunities to young people from Wallingford and around the world. We think our work matters for the world now and into the future. We're preparing great kids to become leaders. They may be the next leaders in this community, maybe Victoria. We're invested. Our school was started here in 1890. We believe in what we do. The faculty, staff, and students that choose and work to go, to work and go to school choose Choate and Wallingford. Most faculty live on campus and have moved to town to be part of this community, yes for their job, but to do more than that. We model what we teach. As our statement of expectations, signed by each member of our community each year states in part, "All members of the community have an obligation to know and uphold Choate values and strive to embody them in word and deed. We therefore expect that all members of the community will cultivate compassion and seek to serve others, both within and beyond Choate." To that end, it has been Choate's goal to be a community partner and engaged neighbor. We aim to have ongoing relationships with town and its residents and to determine how we can best contribute to improve the community year over year. We appreciate our privilege, and rather than participate more afar, we would much rather actively engage in the community and participate making Wallingford and the surrounding community the best it can be. We don't toot our own horn, but when asked for help, we help as best we can. When asked to host, we host if we can. We prioritize Wallingford-based organizations. When asked to donate, we donate. Sometimes we donate before they ask. When asked to volunteer, we are there. When asked why we do what we do, we answer. When asked to fill a need, we figure out a way. We don't tally the time, resource, or effort it takes. We don't see community as transactional, we want it to be relational. After all, Wallingford is our hometown, too. So to re-center tonight's discussion, we seek approval for an air easement over Christian Street for an elevated pedestrian bridge that will improve our community. And I just want to say, I am in receipt of your letter, Mr. Testa, as of 12:30 this afternoon, and I did forward it to Dr. Curtis, as I would with any communication. He's on medical leave, and I just want to say publicly, we've never been asked to discuss a pilot before. So this is all very new to us and not what we prepared for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll on the motion?
Allison?
Yes.
Carmandy?
No.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
No.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
And I vote yes, the motion carries. Onto number eight, an update condition or report of structure, possible action regarding funds being held for the benefit of the Animal Control Division, known colloquially, colloquially, ah, colloquially known as the Dog Pound Trust, to you, Counselor Fishbein. And Mr. Gibbs is with us.
Oh, good. I apologize for giving you the tongue-twister of words. I was going to make for Mr. Gibbs to get up here.
Mr. Gibbs, kindly join us.
Sure.
And good evening, sir. If you'd just give your name and title for the record, please.
Mitch Gibbs, Animal Control Officer for the town of Wallingford.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Last November, after the election, we had a meeting at which we accepted a bequest. Somebody had passed and they donated, I think it was like a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, something like that. No, it was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And at that point, I had questioned, you know, we have a lot of money in the Dog Pound Trust, you know, what is the plan? And at that point, it was represented to us, I mean, Mayor Cervone had recently been elected, he's getting alighted to the office, and that in the new term, there would be a discussion and some proposals, discussions, and all that stuff. So I thought it was appropriate that, you know, we waited about seven months and then, you know, let's have the discussion. So I appreciate the breakdown that we got today, which indicates that there's about eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars in the account as of the end of June. So one of the questions that I had, there's an expense here for a vehicle, fifty-one thousand dollars, and I guess AP is accounts payable, so it's like something that's been promised but not paid for, it's in flux, is that fair?
To my knowledge, I mean, I had submitted the...
That came from me, Counselor, this summer. So AP is, the bills were paid after, in July, but the invoices were dated before July.
Okay, so that was, it's shown as an expense from the Dog Pound Trust, though?
Correct.
Okay. So just explain that again. Has the vehicle been purchased?
The vehicle has been purchased and it's in service.
Okay. And has it been paid for?
Yes.
Okay. So the AP column is items that, if you could just explain what the AP column is?
So the AP column was, when I, when we go do these funds, we usually do it on a cash basis. So when I was doing the summary, all the trust funds are combined into one accounting thing, so I noticed these payables in there, so then I went through to show you that, that these were paid there. So the cash isn't out yet, but the bill is there, as of June 30th. It's paid now. So in our audit report, we're going to have assets of cash, eight fifty-six, we're going to have a liability of the sixty-six, five ninety-two as AP, and the expenditures are accounted as spent at June 30th.
Okay, so it's a straight deduction ultimately, and it carries over, and we end up with the eight fifty-six.
Correct. That's what the fund balance is going to be at June 30th, once it's audited.
So you mentioned, Mr. Senna, that there are multiple accounts here.
So there's two funds. So you have the trust fund, and then there's a checking account that the expenses come out of. So when that, when they do a fundraiser or whatever for donations, that gets put into the checking account. And then that they can, you know, it's just all part of the pot. Once that checking account is low, then we would transfer money out of the trust that's earning interest to go into the checking account to pay the expenses.
Okay, so we try and keep a nominal amount in the checking account because we want to maximize our investment?
Correct.
Okay. And who, I mean, I thought it was this body that determines the administration of an account like this. And I don't, I mean, I've been up here since 2010 or something like that. I don't ever recall us talking about investing it, where to invest it, that kind of stuff. So how does that happen?
Where it's invested and all the stuff, that's my, that's, that's under the comptrollers.
Okay.
You know, those are our decisions. That's not a decision you guys would make. And this is one of the only funds, this is a fund since I've been, when I was a deputy comptroller, that the expenses, it's administered by the mayor.
Well, that's not what the charter says. So, right, Janice? I mean...
Sir, we've been through this before.
I know, there was a deferral...
The council had the power, the council delegated it to the mayor's office. At one point in history, you took it back, and then there was an uproar, and you gave it back to the mayor. That's my recollection. But we went through this in the past, probably twice in the past five or six years.
Okay, but I thought that that deferral of power was not all told, it was on expenditures.
Right.
Okay, so we've got almost a million dollars that's being invested. Okay, so we've got almost a million dollars that's being invested. I don't ever recall the council, and I went back and looked at the history of this, ever deferring to the executive branch the decisions on how it was going to be invested, which is different, different from expended.
Okay, so I haven't looked at the, I, my recollect, we haven't discussed the actual investment of the fund, but I believe that falls under the charter. I don't, I'd have to take a look at it, under the powers of the comptroller's office. I mean, I have to look at, I've not answered it. I have not looked at, can the council dictate how it's invested? I'd have to take a look at that.
I think it's expressly in the, but we can-
I'd have to look at it.
We'll talk about it, yeah, so certainly. So I just, so, Mr. Senna, right now, because I don't ever recall any accounting, I could be wrong in that, accounting coming to the council about how much was in there and like some sort of status. Is that fair?
I don't, I mean, if you want, if you ask for it, we would provide it. I mean-
Yeah, I mean-
It's, it's in, these two cash accounts, it's in, it's audited, it's in every ACFR we've ever issued.
Yeah, well, you know, for those of us that actually knows what happens with municipal audit, I mean, it isn't like a forensic audit. I've learned that over time. They, they pick out stuff out of a box and, you know, it's, there's a certain number of things. So I know the municipal audit process.
So you guys, you ask for a report, I provide a report. If you want a quarterly report or, you know, whatever you need, we can provide it.
Well, and let me just explain where and how I got here at this point. Somebody came, a resident of the town came to me and said, you know, we're getting on an age, we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars, and we want to donate it to the Dog Pound Trust. Do you think it's a good idea? And I said, no, because the money just sits there. So I was like, wow, you know, they owe us a report. You know, I suggested a different thing they could do with the money for the town, but, you know, we've got almost a million dollars. And, you know, I look forward, Janice, to having a discussion on who's in charge of this because I would expect more, you know, more often reporting, but that's a different issue. So, Mr. Gibbs, understanding, you're relatively new to the position. I mean, you've been, what, a year and a half, two years, maybe?
Three years.
Okay. Well, congratulations on making it that, that far. Any ideas on, you know, people have come to me and they're like, well, the facility has had problems, you know, you've got almost a million dollars, you know, have you thought about building a new facility? Do you have any ideas of what we possibly, not that I'm looking to spend a million dollars, but any ideas?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you can't build a new facility for a million dollars.
Okay. I-
Based on recent experience-
On the police station.
You don't get anything for a million dollars. It's just, yeah. But, you know, we, Mr. Gibbs and I do talk periodically about what's going on there, where there are opportunities for improvement. We have a cat room that's about to undergo a substantial renovation. We learned of the existence of cat condos. So the cat pens are going to be replaced with cat condos. Mr. Gibbs and I agree that it's an industry that we wish we, we wish we had gotten into at the inception because they're quite an expense. But that's one example. I did, you know, after, I think it was, was it in November or December, I did go visit the facility. I did tour it with Mr. Gibbs. You know, we did have a period where the facility, the condition of the facility was in question. And having been there several times, you know, my wife and I have rescued a couple of dogs from the facility. It is in much better shape today than it was, say, 10 years ago. I think it's being reasonably well-maintained. We looked, it's air-conditioned. There's a modern heating system. But we've also done some security upgrades there. The facility is a virtual island, you know, it's isolated from other town buildings. It's, the only thing nearby is, is the transfer station and the solar farm. So for those reasons, we thought it appropriate to undergo some security upgrades. In the dog kennel area of the facility, there is a, a channel for waste that I certainly don't like, and we are going to, just because it's open, and to me, it presents a tripping hazard. We are certainly, we're working on finding a solution to make that safe. So we are talking with some regularity about opportunities for improvements for the care of animals, and we'll continue to do so. And, you know, we, we just, a week, this past Friday or the Friday before, talk about your, your experience. Was it 37 animals?
Yes.
So, you know, we, we're at capacity, and we're grateful for surrounding towns and rescues who are participating in that particular instance. But if we continue to deal with that volume of a need for response, we could explore to see if there's a reasonable expansion of the facility.
The, thank you. The security upgrades, Mayor, that you were just talking about, there's an entry on the breakdown that we got for $6,175.66. Is that the upgrades or are those ongoing upgrades?
That, that, I think, covers most of the improvements that were done under the, the last accounting. There's a security system installed, and there's also now fiber optic connected.
Correct.
And the stuff that you're talking about doing, about how much do you think you would be spending on that?
So, so as far as the renovations to the cat room goes, the upgrades to the cat housing is going to cost about $35,000. We're looking into improving the ventilation for both cat rooms. Right now, there is no mechanical ventilation, so, you know, the air is kind of stagnant. It's, you know, unhealthy for the staff, but also for the animals as well. So we're going to be looking into upgrading that. There's no cost on the table yet. This is all in the exploratory phase. But that's, you know, some of future projects that we're looking into to, to use the trust fund for.
So the cat room, the air being stagnant, how is that working with the air conditioning situat-, there's, there's no airflow?
So there's separate air conditioning for the kennels, which was, that was installed two years ago. The front of the building where the cats are being housed has always been air-conditioned. There's just no mechanical flow. There's no suction of air from the rooms out of the facility. You know, air comes in, but there's no mechanical pulling the air out. It's just kind of like a passive system. So we need to be able to flip a switch and create suction. Air comes in, air goes out. So we have, you know, circular motion of the air.
And correcting that is part of the upgrades that you're-
Correct.
-talking about. Okay. The 37 animals, yeah, I read about that tragic situation, but just, and I know you can only say so much about that case, but I did read that those animals were not available for adoption. Is there a reason for that?
Well, the, the dogs were all surrendered to the town of Wallingford. Since then, they've gone out to different animal controls and different rescues. So most, if not all, should be available for adoption at this point.
Okay. And then a question that I've been asking for six, eight years now, do you have hot water?
Yes, we have hot water.
Okay.
We do.
Nobody would answer the question, but anyway. So the next time somebody comes to me and asks or suggests donating, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to this fund, understanding that based upon what I'm hearing now, you might spend, let's say, $50,000 from it, which would leave about $800,000 of it. What should I tell that person? Is it a, is it something they should do or?
I believe it's something that we should do. Not only can we use the money for improvements to the building, but the meat and potatoes of the fund has always been funding for medical expenses that are beyond routine care, which we would pay out of our budget. You know, Wallingford is blessed to have this account. We're able to do more for our animals than pretty much any municipality that I, that I know of. You know, I think that we're able to, to help a lot more animals directly than other facilities, you know, who would have to try to do fundraising or, or resource out to rescues who are already burdened with their own financial issues. You know, when we have cruelty cases and we need to, for instance, you know, we had a husky that, that was being abused, that needed his leg amputated. That came from the trust fund. In the past two years, you know, eight cases that I've referenced here, we've paid out $23,650. And that's just for, for eight animals, you know, for, that needed significant, you know, surgery or, or care.
Yeah, it appear, you know, I appreciate your answer. It appears that, because I know that question's been asked years ago, that on average, it's about $20,000 per year that's spent on medical. And as I'm just looking at the balance and the account and understand that that is, I totally agree. It is an opportunity that other municipalities don't have, but, okay. Well, I appreciate, appreciate you being here and answering the questions and having part of, being part of the discussion. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
You know, I, I've been working with Mitch more closely since taking office, and I'm always, always impressed with the care that, and concern that is expressed about animals. One of the things I learned over the past several months is that the single greatest reason for discharge of police firearms in Wallingford is to euthanize rabid raccoons, which is good and bad for reasons we can all think of. But one of the things we recently discussed was, you know, instead of discharging firearms, looking at more humane ways of euthanizing. And so, came to me and talked about using a CO2 method where the animal experiences the symptoms of getting drowsy and simply falling asleep. Much safer, much more humane. That's going to cost a couple of dollars. But it's, you know, it's the kind of thinking that happens at our animal control facility. And I just thought that Mr. Gibbs should get some acknowledgement for supporting that facility and that kind of thinking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Onto Counselor Allison.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your work in the community. I haven't been there recently, but I did tour with you about a year ago. And if I could give you all of the room in the world, I would totally invest in this community's animal shelter because I know it's being well-cared-for. I think that, to the extent that we are managing the funds, we're managing them responsibly because we are earning interest on them, which essentially is, which essentially is paying for some of these things so that we are not spending down completely this money with no, with no earning off of it. So thank you also to Mr. Senna's office for doing that well. I don't know how you do what you do, and I have recognized you to others here, but I really do want to take this opportunity to just say absolutely thank you, thank your staff. Thank you to the friends of the Wallingford Animal Shelter. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. And I think anybody who wanted to invest there, a, any kind of an endowment, would be greatly served doing it with your organization.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the council? Members of the public? All right, signature motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Gibbs, for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Officer Gibbs. Moving on to number nine. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the use of ARPA funds for the following. Appropriate $221,700 to cover the remaining IT projects. Appropriate $5,000 to fund a historic walking route. And appropriate $150,000 to cover additional costs related to the town hall roof repairs. Second.
Discussion on the motion? Okay, no discussion. Members of the public? Okay, I think we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, no, Mr. Testa is opposed, but the motion carries.
And is Counselor Regan?
Counselor Regan disconnected. He's, he's, he has private matter to attend to. Number 10. So discussion possible action regarding awarding the remaining ARPA funds to the Community Pool Project. So I had a discussion with the mayor today about this. So I put this on the agenda, a discussion with the mayor today about it. And I believe that this, that the pool project is going out to bid shortly, Mr. Mayor. Is that correct?
That's, you know, the council has the estimates that we received, and if I have some sense that everybody's in favor of sending out to bid, we'll send it out to bid. It'll come back to the council for bond and award.
Okay, so my intent was to move this as an item to spend the remaining ARPA funds on the Community Pool Project, but I think at this point, I'd like to wait and see what the bids are, and then we can decide if it's, you know, if that's within what we feel is appropriate for the project, then appropriate the rest of the ARPA funds to the Community Pool Project. But I'm, I'm happy to hear thoughts on it.
So in addition, both law and comptroller, we've discussed the need to commit all funds by 12:31. And if you'll recall, about three years ago, there was a motion to, to allocate $10 million of the ARPA funds for municipal uses. And in light of that motion, it seems that we could allocate the remaining ARPA funds into the general fund with an understanding that we can recapture them if we have a project after December 31. And the reason why I bring that up is because we may not be able to commit the funds to the pool by December 31. But we, we will be able to do something to prevent having to return them to the federal government. So we do have a little more latitude. Additionally, the fire depart-, I'm sorry, not the fire department, the police department is considering another project that may come before the council and be appropriate for ARPA funds. And you may have heard that a couple of months ago, my dog and I and Mr. Crouch and Ms. Davis and Mr. Pajini were walking behind the parking lots behind Center Street. There are some improvements, possible bike racks, some, some small projects consistent with that, not, not inclusive of something as big as the paving, that we'd like the council to consider for these funds. And so we're hoping those will come to you in the coming weeks. But if I'm hearing from the council that, you know, having reviewed the, the cost estimate for the pool, there's some interest in going out to bid, we will go ahead and do that.
So, you know, I'm interested in this project in a, in a serious way, at least to get the hard numbers so we know whether we want to move forward or not. And I think, in our prior discussion, Mayor, you know, I've sort of expressed that I'd like to either see the pool project completed or move on with the park, because right now, the park is an eyesore, you know. And so I think we need to come to some sort of disposition with that. I'd like to see the pool replaced, but if we're not going to replace the pool, then let's just go in a different direction and just, you know, put it to bed. But I'm, Counselor Reynolds?
I'm, I'm just a little confused. So forgive me. Are you saying because the money had been allocated towards the pool before, that, no. So how do we, so the remaining money can just go into the general fund?
It, it can. With, it, it would, it wouldn't just lapse into the general fund. We'd have to come before the council. So you'd have a number, so you'd know what went into the general fund, so you can keep track of that. And if the pool is awarded January 31st, you can go back and ask for that money to go into the pool project.
But wouldn't that be appropriate for any project just outside of the pool? Or is it because the pool is, I'm just, because we just approved like 300 grand, just gone. And now we're saying, well, actually, the remaining money, we can put into the general fund and then use after the fact. And I'm just confused as to which one is, which, what, which one's driving the cart here?
That's a good question.
Do we have to spend the money by the end of the year and allocate it to committed projects like we talked about last meeting? Or can we take whatever money is left and put it in the general fund and then spend it however we want next year?
Yeah, so when I had put these on the agenda- Yeah, so when I had put these on the agenda initially, my impression was the same as yours, that this money had to be expended, or at least earmarked for something, a shovel-ready project by the 31st, but now, December 31st. But now, my understanding since that, is that our position on that has changed, is that correct, Mayor?
I'll handle this one. We can take what's, whatever left and use it to pay something that's already in the general fund budget, and then we're going to use that as what we spent the money for. But now that you've transferred in the money to the general fund, it opens up that hole that you could, you, you could appropriate to spend on something else.
And so, just to clarify, though, when you say spend on something else, you mean literally anything, like we could spend on salary if we wanted to?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds.
No, I'm just...
I know.
So, we could have taken thirteen million dollars and just put it to the, to our, to anything, everything we wanted from day one, and then just took thirteen million dollars and put it aside later on by, right? I mean, like, that's basically what we just said now.
No, no, my understanding was what we...
This is the end.
Go ahead.
So, we, there was the ten million dollar exemption, which...
Sorry, ten, sorry, go ahead.
So, you could have, you could have done that, but we were trying to be responsible and do projects that you voted for.
Yeah, I know, but I voted for projects with the expectation that this money had to be spent and gone, I just, I just okayed three hundred thousand dollars in expenditures tonight that I may not have voted for. Counselor Testa voted no, had I had that knowledge before that vote, I would have voted no on that stuff. Like, I'm just confused by this, because, you know, let's talk about a skate park, right? Skate park's an investment in the community, a skate park is an investment in our youth, we've done very little of that with this money, we've done very little with that, with direct investment in our youth in this community, and the reasons why we didn't do that was because we were under the impression that we had to do something before the clock ran out. Now there is no clock, I'm just frustrated by that, because I would not have voted, I would have, I'll go back through the next, through the last four meetings, and, and I voted no on spending ARPA money on certain things, but like, we could have, all right, never mind, thank you.
Mr. Testa.
How much money are you talking about, Joe, when you, Mr. Chairman, when you say you were thinking of applying it to the pool project?
So, my thought was the balance, and I know some money's coming back later, so it's, so we had roughly nine hundred thousand prior to spending the three hundred thousand tonight, correct?
After it was approved tonight, it's seven hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, so, so my impression was the seven seventy plus whatever money, you know, we would caveat it with, we would get whatever additional money came back, would go towards that project.
Okay. And we wouldn't have to spend it by the end of the year?
You never had to spend it by the end of the year, you have until 2026 to spend the money, you have to, it has to be committed by the end of the year, and what, what Tim is saying is that you can, and it would have to come back to you as, in appropriation, right, correct, into the current budget for items that are already there, so you have then committed them to something, and then create, thereby creating the same amount, I'm going to call it a surplus, I don't think that's, I don't know if that's the right word or not, which you then can allocate to the pool. This is all being discussed in this manner, because you want, if you want to use it for the pool, you're not in a position to commit that money legally to the pool. So, this is after the comptroller spoke to the consultant, this would be the one way to accomplish what it is you apparently wanted. Otherwise, you have to, the rules hasn't changed, you're going to have to commit that money by the end of this year to different purposes. So, in order to do this, if that's what you want to do, you want this money to specifically go for the pool, given that there's nothing been, we're not in a position to commit that money, this is the process by which we could achieve the goal, if that's the goal you want. If you don't want that goal, then we're going to come back, either you're going to come up with ideas, or the administration's going to come up with ideas of how to commit the money by the end of the year, that hasn't changed.
Thank you. So, there was a, second to the last statement you made, you said you're going to come up with some ideas. Imagine that, we have it yet, three years, how many years, we were, we kept saying we wanted to do it, and we have it yet, and we continue to approve spending this money on all sorts of operational expenses and so forth, capital expenses, which we need, but, and then tonight, we threw another whatever to pay for the roof, and all along, I said a long time ago, I wanted to build a skate park, Counselor Reynolds is like driving this, pushing for us to develop a skate park, so we clearly have the money still available to build a skate park, and now if we at least commit it by the end of the year, we could then have the money to build a skate park, and I would normally be the last person to say, no, don't put money, money, any money on the pool, because I've been all pool all the time, but the bottom line is, we're going to bond that project. Now, you want, can a half a million dollars, take, take the bite, a little bit of a bite? Sure, because there's a million still sitting in the bank, that could take a little bit of a, but in the big picture, what can we do that would have an immediate impact, meet the spirit of what we've been talking about for several years, and that would be some type of project that we choose as a council, that we want to go forward with, we've never gotten, and we've still never talked about that, to any, to any real extent.
Yeah, so in fairness, though, this has been on the agenda twice to talk about, right, and no, we've had some sort of ideas that came forward, so my thought was to try to drive the conversation by putting the money towards the pool. If the council decides it wants to go in the direction of a skate park or anything else, I may or may not, you know, be supportive of whatever it is, but the pool was something that we had voted 9-0 to move forward with prior, you know, a while ago, right, and it's something we brought up a bunch of times. So, my thought is just to try to focus the conversation into something productive, that's sort of along the lines of the things that you're saying, right, something that the, that the town wants, something that we can sort of, you know, attach our names to. So, that's why my, I thought moving the money towards the pool, but again, I'm open to whatever other suggestions we have, we just haven't had, you know, no one's put a motion forward, no counselor has put a motion forward to suggest an item, you know, in the, in the three years that we've been talking about this, so I'm just trying to drive the conversation. Onto Counselor Fishbein.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I, I, no, I didn't mean any disrespect, by the way, I appreciate what you did and what you're doing, but as we learn a little bit more tonight, we realize that we could be pursuing a project that we wanted to pursue, but we're under the impression we didn't have time to get done, and so that's, I mean, I would, I would assume you will hear from Counselor Reynolds, and myself, and others, probably, about moving forward with a skate park, because it's, but, and remember, months, two years ago, everybody had a list, and, it just, every time we turned around, there was a list from the administration to spend money, and we kept approving it, our fault, but we never, to this day, you know, said, let's get together and hash out some ideas. So, just, I would counter the, the assertion that no counselor has suggested or requested or made a motion for anything else, because, because, for myself anyway, I've always felt that we were operating under the assumption that when we were going to, if we were going to consider council suggested projects, we would get together and talk about them as a group, and we wouldn't just have one person spring, spring a project on, on the group, you know?
I do.
So, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I mean, respectfully, a man of your experience, though, at the legislature, understands that everything is a motion, you know, and conversation, so, to that end, I proposed the motion. If the council, if this is not the council's will, you know, then you can vote no, and, and really, there is no motion on the table right now, I'm just sort of forming the conversation based on the, the latest information, right? So, so moving on to Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a question, what is the timing on the bids coming back for the pool?
As it hasn't gone out yet, I'm not sure, so we, I can talk to purchasing and see how long it takes for the, the bid to be opened up, but it's got to be formulated, you know, into a, into a proper draft, and then posted, and whatever the appropriate period of time is, and, I, I mean, I would guesstimate, based on some recent experience, it could be two months, it could be...
So, you're talking the end of the year anyway, so, and just for Counselor Testa's edification, it was either the last meeting or the meeting before, I, I think he left early, but I, I brought up the skate park, because I've been in favor of the skate park, and what I was told, what we were told, was it's got to be a shovel-ready project. So, sort of thinking outside the box here, if the number for the pool comes in at eighteen million dollars, I don't know that there's going to be a lot of support for that, however, we own this property, and I guess we could cobble together a splash pad and a skate park, just think outside the box, instead of having the pool, right, at this site, which I think would meet some of the needs we're talking about. So, with the understanding, if that's acceptable, to put this money into something with the intent of being utilized for that property, not necessarily for the pool, but for a project to enhance our community, you know, I would be in support of that. I don't, I just want to, don't want to be curtailed to only do a pool, because then we get into the, well, the pool's way too expensive, you're going to bond it anyway, and the money's going to go for something else. So, if we're not going to get a pool, I think we could have a discussion about putting a skate park there, so I just want to throw that out there.
If I may?
Yeah.
The difference is that we have a design for a pool park, you know, that, that's essentially a shovel-ready project, so, we have bitspex that we previously used, those are going to be used again for the skate park, we don't, you know, we don't have a design, if you pivot from the pool, then, then you might have a location, because otherwise, you know, we, we don't have an identified location.
But if we earmark this money for a project for that particular site, even though we don't have a plan, that's doable based upon what I'm hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just, you know, be, with all, I mean, if the administration had, was open to a skate park, right, in January, we could have been going down that road, getting drawings, that kind of stuff, and I don't fault the administration, but I think we need something, and a skate park is doable. Pool may not be doable, I mean, eighteen million dollars for a pool under those plans, which I didn't like those plans, we're going to get a lot of pushback from the public, we already get pushback on the, the money that we were going to spend. I just, I want to see something, something new in this town, you know, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Onto Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Counselor Reynolds, I, I think this is, this seems very opposite of what we've been being told for the past three or so years, and so, it concerns me to take this route now, when this is completely different than what we've been being told, and my, the last thing I would want is for the federal government to take this money back, because there was a misinterpretation, or we didn't spend it in time, or we thought if it was earmarked, it was okay, and then it turns out it's not. So, it makes me very nervous to spend the money in this way, to just kind of set it aside, I think I'd rather we, we stay the course that we've been, you know, the, the impression we've been under for the past few years, and we actually have that money spent by those deadlines on an actual, just like we did in, in Agenda Item 9. So, at this point, I'm, I prefer to keep going that route, and I, I would not support putting this money aside for a pool project that may or may not happen. As far as, you know, the mayor was asking, you know, our thoughts kind of on where we are with, with the bids, or with the pool going out to bid again, in light of the estimates we received recently, I, I still, I know I said this a while ago, I still need to know with full certainty that the current pool and the property is not fixable, and I know, I believe we, we had voted on that with, the last time it was going to go out to bid, that we would maybe put out an RFP for the renovation, reopening of the current pool, I would still be in support of that, I think, for me to be able to spend millions and millions of dollars of taxpayer money on a completely new project without knowing with full certainty that we can't fix what we have, I wouldn't be willing to do, so I'm still, I'm still where I was, you know, with that, and that's, those are my thoughts on it, thank you.
Counselor Alson.
So, every budget, when we've been appropriating things to fire trucks, et cetera, et cetera, I have said, I really don't necessarily agree with bailing ourselves out when we could be spending this on a community project. That has always been my representation, so I'm kind of confused as to where I was when everybody else got this impression that it had to be a shovel-ready project, my understanding is perhaps I wasn't at that meeting. So, I agree with Counselor Tada with, regarding where we are right now, I think that we should invest this money in projects that can be done, projects that the money can be committed to before the end of the year, and essentially done in the next year according to, you know, whatever purchasing delays there might be, or whatever. I think that we have to stay the course that we're on at this point, I don't think that the one million that's in the bank for the pool and five hundred thousand that we might put aside for this today, could, or, oh, seven hundred thousand, sorry, I was thinking of a different project, could, is really going to make too much of a dent in a twenty million dollar project if it, if it is a pool. And then we talk about the skate park, we don't have anything specked out as far as how much a skate park costs, feasibly, I get that it would probably cost less than a pool, but then I wonder what the ongoing liability is for the town, as far as people getting injured, I understand, I could probably look up all that information from Cheshire, you know, I would need a really strong understanding before I could support a project like that, especially since we don't have any estimates or bids for that particular park in that particular place, and it's not to say that I'd always be opposed to it, I would just need more information. I don't think, therefore, committing a blanket amount of money to improving Community Pool Park is necessarily a responsible use of this funding, I think if we get to a point where we, the public has determined that they want a community pool, I think that that is when we have to agree or disagree to spend the money. I know it's a big word, and I don't know if I'm supposed to even refer to it in the meeting, but I would prefer that something, a recreational park such as that would go to referendum before it would be approved by us, because I would love to know if the public genuinely has an interest in that. This being a presidential election year, I would say it's probably a good time to do it, but I can't trigger that, and I'm only opining, to use Chairman Marone's word, on whether that would be something that would be raised by the public. My final comment would be, I do think that we can still do some valuable things with this money, with whatever remains, I do think that if we are so worried about not being able to spend it in time, we should consider putting it into the general fund, anything at that scale would have to be, spending at that scale would have to be approved by us if suddenly some new thing came up, so I don't think that it could be easily hidden that it's in the general fund and now we can't do anything with it. So, I guess these are just my, it's, it's like a collection of thoughts regarding this whole thing, and I was kind of wondering where I was when a lot of this impression was made, because I've said it in every budget meeting, when we pass the budget, like, I, I would love to have something that we could put the, the town of Wallingford on as a representative project, but we continue to go the route of building projects that are definitely necessary, that are saving us from spending the money elsewhere. are saving us from spending the money elsewhere, but maybe not what I would prefer. I consider it a win that I was part of the group that wanted to give some money to businesses and nonprofits. So however the rest of the money was wanted to be spent, I would go along with. So thank you guys very much. And again, I'm not opposed to a skate park, I just need to know a lot more information before I could get behind it. Thank you.
So, you know, the referendum thing, we can't do a referendum, you know, according to the charter. So we would have to vote to spend the money, and then the public could challenge it and force a referendum over whether the, our spending got overturned. But there really isn't a mechanism in town to push a referendum. I'm not opposed to a skate park either, I think that, that could be a valuable project too. My biggest concern is we have an eyesore of a property, you know, on North Main Street Extension, right? And so more than anything, I want to close the loop on that. And so if the council decides that the pool's not worth it, I can, I can live with that decision, but I just want to, we need to take care of our backyard, you know, because it's a, it's an ugly property. And, you know, to Counselor Tada, we all toured the property together and looked at the mechanicals and looked at the pool, and we see the cracks, we see the trees and stuff. So, I mean, I suppose anything could be repaired to bring it back to functionality, but I just don't know how realistically, after we all toured it together, anyone can say, well, what would it cost to fix it? Like, it's not, it's not a pool at all, it's an impoundment or whatever it's called, you know, and it's a, the, the zero entry is considered sort of unmodern and doesn't meet, you know, ADA compliance and all that. So I'm not sure, under what circumstance, we would ever consider reopening the pool in the form that it was. So I think, you know, if the, the goal is to pave it over and do something else, or turn it into a ball fields or whatever, then I think that that's a reasonable discussion. But I, I think it's either move forward with, you know, I'd like to see the pool come back, so that's why I'm pushing this, sort of is my idea. The idea of putting the money in the general fund gives me pause, because I think we're going to end up in this situation for the next, you know, three years, talking about, having this, this same circular discussion about what are we going to spend the money on. So I, I guess the, the mayor, mayor's question is, does the council wish to move forward with putting this out to bid again to get a hard number? And so I think without, you know, the estimate we got was 12 million, then tonight I've heard 18 and 20 million, and it could be more than that, or it could be less than that, right? But we don't know because we don't have a bid. So, so I'm very much in support of let's get the bid, and then when we, based on that number, we can decide if we think this is a worthwhile project to undertake or not. So I guess I'm just asking for everyone's opinion, you know, do, do we want to move forward with the bid? Okay. All right. So Mayor, there's your answer then. If we can move forward with the bid, and then we'll, we'll go from there. Any other comments on this topic? Counsel Laffin.
Thank you. Real quick, because I don't want to recap everything from the last meeting, I agree a lot with what Counselor Testa said. I think we do the pool, we bond the pool. We, we still do have a couple of months to figure out the, the rest of the spending. It seems to happen pretty easily anyway, on its own. Referendum, if we by chance got the bid and we all agreed to unanimously support it, but then also agreed to go out and help collect signatures, we could, in effect, create a referendum event intentionally to give that option to the community to decide once and for all. So that is, we'd have to play around the cycle. And in that, if we did that, I would feel comfortable if we all agreed we were doing this together, so it's not like, I don't want the pool, you don't want the pool, none of that. We're just pushing the idea forward to get the referendum, and we ourselves go out and stand on the corner and help collect signatures. That's one way to end the debate once and for all. There's a couple of things we could do with that, with that space and splash pads and whatnot, if the, the pool is just too big, but we can decide that after the community speaks to it.
All right. Anyone else on this topic? Members of the public? All right, moving on to number 11. Discussion, possible action to adopt a new incentive program from the EDC. Good evening, gentlemen. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself to the records.
Don Krauch, Economic Development Specialist.
Joe Mira, Chair, Chair of the EDC.
Thank you, and what have you for us today, Mr. Krauch?
All right. So just wanted to talk about a, an office incentive to fill vacant office space. This would deal with the personal property tax. Highlights of the program would be for applicants that are leasing new office space in existing vacant office buildings located in the IX and WI. And then the tax abatement would be based on either a five-year lease agreement or a three-year lease agreement, five-year lease agreement proposing year one and two, 100% tax abatement, year three, 75%, year four, 50%, year five, 25%. And then a three-year lease would be 150 and 25. So just wanted to give you a little bit of stats, kind of on the current office vacancies in the market. The northern market, which is Hampden, Wallingford, Cheshire, Meriden, there's 2.688 million square feet of Class A and Class B office space. For the total markets, about 20% vacancy. The overall asking rates for leases is about $23.23 per square foot. If you look at just Wallingford Class A, 46.5% vacant, which most of that is Campus at Green Hill, which is about 150,000 to 160,000 square feet available. Right now, many of the leases that are coming up, businesses are going building to building. So they're either jump into another building, better space for less money, same or less square footage. Not necessarily in this, in, in Wallingford, but in Hartford, some of the large buildings, the properties are worth less than four years ago. Monies aren't, owners aren't putting money into the renovations or purchasing on spec, which what's happening is, is just the vacancies are going up. The great thing with Wallingford, I mean, we, we do have the low electric rates, we do have the office incentive on the real personal property, no one's really putting money in on that, on that part of it. But this would be the first time that we can actually look at the personal property tax abatement. The state statutes were just updated to allow personal property tax abatement, and they also increased from 10 years to 30 years. We're definitely not proposing 30 years on that. But it's, it's something that the law, it goes into effect October 1, so Wallingford would be one of the first towns to kind of move the needle. I mean, you're still looking a couple of years out from people, even when they're looking for space. You know, Guilford Savings Bank, that was like a four-year process of them looking for space. So it's definitely, this isn't, you know, it's not going to solve our vacancy issues overnight, but it's definitely one thing that can help, especially with our low electric rates and our low mill rate.
All right, questions, starting with Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So I, I say this every time we have a tax abatement program, so I know you know what I'm going to say, but I, I generally, the idea of abatements, I don't like because I think that we should try to just keep our taxes low for everybody, and when you give somebody a special program, it's obviously costing somebody else something. And so, you know, philosophically, I don't like abatements. I know you've all heard me say this before. But then again, you know, I don't know, I look at this and I think if we're going, if we're going to fill some of this vacant office space and it gives Wallingford a leg up to do so, you know, then we're, we're kind of making that money rather than having a vacant space. So I'm, I'm not 100% sure where I land on this at this point, but I just wanted to let you know, as you already know, that's, that's kind of where I am. But do, do you see this? I'm assuming you see this as something that you're going to kind of market, you know, like you said, in, you know, in tandem with the low electric rates, with our location, with everything else we offer, to try to induce, to fill some of this vacant office space, I assume.
First of all, you're kind of right as far as it goes with the abatement. Somebody's going to lose money. But what's happening now with our current programs, homeowners are losing money because these commercial properties being vacant, the property values have gone down, so they're being taxed at a lower rate. So by us filling them up, that'll bring up the property tax up. I mean, we had a property in town that sold for, I guess it was $10 million, recently sold for 3.8. There's going to be a big tax reduction there that our homeowners will probably have to pick it up. So in this case, the abatement is really artificial. It's an artificial term as far as I was concerned. So taking that into consideration, this abatement is going to go to the lessee and not the owner of the building, which is something new. You're, you're right as far as it goes with the other incentives. But the real reason why we're pushing it for now, not only is it, timing is perfect with the new tax, the new state regulation, but there's a lot of corporate leases that are coming up by the end of the year. And as it is now, they're all looking to downsize, new structure, and they want to move into restructuring the, and when they do move, they want different amenities that these older buildings don't have, so they're going to have to invest in them. So this is going to give our property owners the, the leg up to attract these people and really fill them up. And as you know, it's, it's a multiplier. Once those offices get filled, the, the restaurants downtown get filled, the waitresses go buy bigger apartments, waiters buy bigger apartments, and it's just a chain reaction, the gas stations, the economy. It just helps the overall economy.
And, and, and just to add, add in on that, you know, another reason we, we came to look at the personal property to fill some of the office vacant, because there's been a lot of talk around the state about affordable housing, kind of don't want our business parks to turn into housing. So we're kind of going to be proactive, get ahead of it, try to fill the office space with the best and the high use from a tax point of view, and really get out there ahead of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mira, Mr. Krauch, you're very convincing, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving on to Counselor Fishbine.
I really want to appreciate, I, I really want to thank you for bringing this to us. You know, I, I rail all the time. You know, the two worst taxes that we have are capital gains and the business personal property tax, because if business does not buy a piece of machinery unless they're going to use it, and that's economic development, and you are the Economic Development Commission, so this matches. I, I can't, so this, this thing passed in a omnibus bill in the legislature, it was like the one thing that I got. I will tell you, I, I think it could be more aggressive. I, I would suggest the year three be 100%, year four, 75%, and year five, 50%. And on the three-year lease, the year two be 75% and year three be 50%. Not playing with, I know we can do this over a longer period of time, but I'm not going, I wouldn't play with what you guys are doing, but, you know, it's exactly what you said, and it is a domino effect. It's new tax money, right? It's new operation of office space that is vacant. I drive down Barnes Road, I see all the lights that are out, you know, where normally you see lights over there. You know, so I, I'm going to throw that out there, I'm not going to make a motion, we'll see what others think, but, you know, thank you, amen. This is exactly what you guys should be doing.
What, what was your 100, 100, 100?
75, 50. Bringing the, the lowest threshold would be 50 for the fifth year, and then the same sort of structure for the three would be 175 and 50, which, you know, we can do, it's new money, it's, you know. We had an issue a few weeks ago, the Health Department came to us about raising penalties, and I was like, you know, on licenses, and, you know, I said, just don't charge a license fee. And the response was, well, that might make more businesses come to town, or restaurants come to town. And I said, you know, is that a, is that a problem? Right? Because it's the same sort of thing, right? They're not economic development, they're Health Department, right? But we should be trying to get the, and this is exactly how you do it, and this is a Wallingford sort of thing. So very much, very much appreciate you coming to us, and I'll leave it at that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Kind of going off what Counselor Fishbine was, was talking about, the five-year, three-year thing. So what's the incentive to stay and not hop out? I mean, most leases are signed, let's say a five-year lease, right? So they know their lease is ending, and now they're going to have to pay more taxes. What if there's incentive elsewhere? They're going to just hop out? Like, is there, I don't know if there's a better way to fade it, and I understand the idea of trying to limit the, the personal property tax, period. But incentive-wise?
They would have, they would have invested their funds in remodeling the, the property. Why would they?
Yeah, but I think in an office setting, you're talking about desks and computers and chairs and...
Yeah, so I mean, you have your standard depreciation.
Right.
So that's going down over 10 years, so it kind of, kind of loses its luster even after probably a certain year anyways. You know, moving is expensive, especially for these large companies. I mean, each cubicle, you're talking probably 20,000 each cubicle. They're putting, you know, I, I've seen some stats, one of the, the companies moving into town, you know, they were 650,000 just on furniture. So I mean, it's, it's big money, so I, I really don't see, this is really probably the larger organizations who are going to come in, take up that space at Campus at Green Hill, and they're probably not moving just because of the tax abatement. But to get them there in the first place, to even look at a space, I mean, that's really what we're, what the real goal is.
Sure. And do we have, or is there a mechanism to, so the landlords aren't pricing around the abatement? You can pay more to me to be in Wallingford because you're not going to have to pay anything on your personal property tax. That, that might, which is fine if that's the way the market goes, but in a way that disincentivizes.
I think what would probably happen, and this is just some, some talk with some brokers, really I think what would happen is, they would probably pay market rate, but the tenant would say to the, the property owner, hey, you need to invest in your lobby, you need to invest in some amenities, we're trying to get people to come back to the office, not work two days from home. So I, I think there's that negotiation that's probably going to happen. Yeah, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll see though.
Okay. Thanks. On to Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So is, would it be of value for this to happen sooner rather than later so that Wallingford could take advantage?
Exactly.
Yeah, with, with the, the state statute going to affect October 1, we're, yeah, that's why we wanted to come early in September, we can get this out to the brokers, once it passes, say, hey, October 1, this will be ready to go. And they'll be able to use that as a marketing tool, along with our low electric rates and our low mill rate. So the sooner the better. I do like Counselor Fishbine's idea with, with the updated amounts.
And, yeah, I don't disagree either. I think being more aggressive, especially being the first out of the gate with what we offer, would be, you know, smart way to operate. I guess my only other question is just, I guess there would be really nothing prevent, so somebody could sign a five-year lease, and then, now I know we talked about like, it's expensive to move, et cetera, but in theory, they could go to the next building over and then sign another five-year lease and then do this again? I'm just, and, and listen, if they did that, to Counselor Laffin's point, if that's how the market works, then fine, I'm okay with that. I'm just, is that, that would be possible, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the good thing about that, they would open up that space for some new people.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious about the logistics, that's all. I don't see it as a rate-limiting factor, I was just curious.
And then, and then the only thing would be, you know, under 2F, you know, if, if they terminated their lease early, town could go back and, you know, claw back those taxes. So there is definitely some incentive also to keep their workforce, so there's not a reduction in the workforce. a reduction in the workforce, um, and also not downsizing on their space as well. Um, I guess that would be the, the clarification if they went to a smaller space next door and it was more than 20%. I guess semantics.
Yeah, and, um, I, I, oh, they'll, oh, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um, and then there would be no limit in terms of the amount of space that someone could occupy within one of these buildings in order to qualify. So if somebody says they want to go into one of these larger buildings, they only want one office, that would still qualify under this? There's, is there a minimum?
Yeah, there, there's no minimum on square footage. I mean, you're probably looking in some of those buildings, you know, 5,000 square feet is probably the smallest, um, you know, on average, some of them, the smaller ones, 5,000, 7,500, and then the larger ones, um, yeah, are definitely, definitely, uh, higher than that.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, thanks for your work on this. Uh, this might be semantics, but it mentions, it says that the applicant is leasing new office space in an existing vacant office building. Does that literally mean the whole building has to be vacant?
Uh, I guess it could say vacant office space building.
I would, I'm not reading this as if...
We can clarify that, it's definitely not the whole building.
That's not the intent, correct?
But it is vacant office, so we don't want...
Right.
Uh, somebody saying, hey, I'm building a new office building and then it's vacant. And then, you know, so this is...
So this would not apply to new, new construction?
It's not, definitely not the intent to have someone build a, a new office building.
I would, I would think you just, you might want to change that to space.
Space.
Uh, just, because to me, I, I read it as the whole building has to be vacant.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, uh...
And I mean, I want to make sure that wasn't your intent.
That was definitely not our intent for the whole office building.
And obviously, the, um, property taxes, uh, this does not impact that. Those are being paid by the owner.
That's the landlord, yeah.
Ongoing. Okay.
And the one thing, that's, and it's actually a good point, on the, 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 the other side of the coin, you know, once they get some tenants in there, um, the property values are going to go back up, the landlord's paying more money on the, the real property taxes. Um, so it is, it is kind of that, uh, multiplying effect.
And that was, that was where I, my next question was going to be, wouldn't that, isn't that an anticipated, hopefully, uh, result of this? Okay, I had one more and I just totally blacked out. Um, give me five seconds, if I don't get it, I'll quit. It's not going to happen. Sort of wore a jacket, I'm freezing. Son of a bitch. Uh, oh, well, I'm all set.
Thank you. Back to Counselor Fishbein.
To hell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, understanding there's no motion on the floor, um, thank you for the discussion. I, I think playing with the three-year situation, um, you know, I'm sensitive to what Counselor Laffin was talking about, about, you know, a temporary, we want these businesses to come in and be part of our community for a long-term, people buy houses and stuff like that. Um, so I propose that we, um, adopt the program as proposed by EDC with the correction, um, adding, uh, changing building to space in A, under section 2A, and then just changing the numbers on the five-year lease agreement to reflect that year three be 100%, year four be 75%, and year five be 50%. So move.
Second.
All right, discussion on the motion? Mr. Testa? Absolutely. But if you don't ask in five seconds, I'm taking the floor back.
This apply to somebody that was expanding? If they're, they're, they're in a building and half the building is vacant and they want to expand into the vacant space?
Yeah, on the new space. Yeah, on the new space, yeah.
So that, that's what I'm saying, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And that, and that might be an incentive to grow their business.
Sure.
Right? And, and be the incentive to purchase new equipment.
And bring more people on, yeah.
So that, okay, that, that was what I was trying to remember. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Uh, any discussion from the public? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
The motion is simply to approve what was before us as of great, correct?
No.
No, no, approve what's before us with the adjustments made by Counselor...
With the amendment, the adjustments made by Counselor Fishbein, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can I call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carman D?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Maron?
Yes, motion is unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item 12, discussion of possible action on the installation of benches at the Doolittle Park basketball courts. Counselor Carman D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I just wanted to check in on this issue. Uh, we had a gentleman here, uh, a few meetings ago, and I've heard from a number of folks in town, um, and I was curious where we might stand if anywhere about the possibility of installing benches at the new basketball courts at Doolittle Park. I think it's a reasonable request. I don't see anyone from Parks and Rec, so Mayor, I, I assume that goes to you.
Yeah, lucky me. Um, so I, I have had some conversations with, uh, Mr. Michaels. He does have some money budgeted for furniture in parks, um, and we're going to talk about where he had planned to put things like benches. So we are having discussions.
Okay, that's good to hear, and do you think we would see this happening in the next few months before the end of the year?
Before we have to wipe snow off of them?
Correct.
Um, I would hope sooner than later, but, um, you know, it, it merits a follow-up conversation.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I appreciate that update. I, I think that's a, a good sign, good news, and, um, we're looking forward to seeing benches installed in, in the park.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? To the public? Okay, and there's no motion on the floor, so we'll move on to item, I'll take, um, a motion on item number 13.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, and, uh...
13 and...
13 and 15, if you don't mind. Uh, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-225-F and 1-206-B to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford, and also pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-225-F, 1-206-E, and 1-210-B10 regarding the draft host fee agreement. Second.
Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, face, by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session.
I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
I will call this meeting back to order. I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Um, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're now back in public session. Item 14 has been withdrawn, and seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.